We're live.
Okay.
The commissioner comments.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America. And to the free, public, and righteous standards one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before public comment, I think we have a couple corrections or changes to the agenda. And so we'll go ahead and take off at 11 o'clock. Do you want to move commissioner comments to 11 or just move it to after public? We'll just move that to after public. I think it should. Okay, first agenda item is public comments. And my public comment, they station name, I'm sure whoever, is the sound done?
It's not in the main level.
Let me check. Amanda normally checks.
Yeah.
Well, I sent a message.
Okay. My name is Sherri Weber and I live in Basser. I would like to comment this morning about our election poll book errors and our election ballots that were given in error to voters registered in Osage County. So that would be alleged election fraud. And I believe the first issue by way of third party information to me came from these particular wards in Osage City. The day that you looked at provisional ballots, which was a few days after the August 2nd primary, Shannon Addington, I believe was in the lead and so was Emily Burkett. And Emily Burkett also had an issue in those same wards that are adjacent to Superior Township. That is a copy of the poll book. To my knowledge, this has not been addressed. There was a formal complaint filed and it was filed with the Secretary of State. Today, I believe the individual who filed it has not heard from the Secretary of State, even though they have repetitively asked to be contacted. And in a meeting of precinct people, Shannon Addington was placed on the ballot as a precinct person because she came into the courthouse and signed to be on file as a precinct person for Republicans. We had a meeting of the Republican Central Committee to reorganize, which we do by statute the other evening. And we were advised that at this point, because the election had been certified, that we would need to file suit. That is not something I think needs to be done. I think we can fix this on our own, but we cannot have poll workers going to poll places in the Osage County and tell people they cannot vote because it's not like that. Even if they're not registered, the way the poll worker thinks they should be, they need to again be able to vote. And we have to have accurate poll workers and I think the only way we're going to be able to have that is to go through it line by line. This is a copy of the complaint and you can provide that to commissioners, I'm sure. But I don't want in this publication, Osage County, to have us listed as somebody who has election fraud. And that's exactly what happened in the primary. And I'm coming to you as public comment to ask you to look into it. And again, I thank you for your time. I'm happy to answer questions. However, I think that this is going to take a little research. And I do believe that there are people who are registered voters in Osage County who will pursue this because we've only got three weeks until people can start to vote in the November election. And that is a very short period of time cleaning up the records. Very short. If they take all of you spending money, maybe $10,000 to mail something to every single registered voter in the county, just to clarify where they live and if they're deceased or if they moved out of the county.
I'm not familiar with Osage City and the wards. But, so you're saying there are people that are registered, they're on the poll books, but they're in the wrong wards?
This one's not, this one's not the wards. The wards are just, they use the wards for the county, or they just sit there?
The wards are used for everything there are precincts.
And you're concerned those are in the wrong poll book?
I'm concerned there's inaccuracies in our poll books when they're given to the poll workers. I'm concerned from listening to anecdotal stories from Ridgeway Township, that we actually had poll workers who told people confronted them that they could not vote. There's also anecdotal information that they were guided as to whom to vote for. So that would be in the training and the implementation. And maybe other places to start would be the list of all of the people who worked the polls during the August primary. And that's easily available on the public order. It has multiple issues.
With, with the poll books, is that something? Are there processes from the state that where the poll books get certified on before those are given out of there, process that goes through to verify that or how that works?
No, they're printed off the election system.
From the state?
Well, it's a statewide system, but we maintain our county.
And so the poll books more be about what they're moving, making sure?
Well, the poll books has got to be listed. So when you go to vote, they find you in your poll book. To then to make sure that you're listed in the poll book.
Correct. Which is what you registered, that work? And then if you moved, you have to re-register.
Which is when we get down homes.
Right, or they come in and they register before the election.
So are there, were there problems in that primary or were?
Yes, the lines for the house district, there were some street segments that were incorrect and we are still working with ESNS to try to correct those. We've been mapping, we went name by name down the list, found them on the map working where they should be and ESNS is trying to help us clean up the street file.
So did the redistricting change a bunch of stuff in Osage County?
Yes.
Okay. But not, they wouldn't have changed the words of the city?
No, the redistricting was the, you went from Bridge to Rock and Bridge.
We have elections that were decided within very few votes, in some cases less than ten votes. And we have Shannon Addington as a precinct person who came in here, signed her name to be on the ballot and the ballot she was given by a poll worker was not the ballot she should have had because her name was not on the ballot. And then there's other anecdotal information about people who didn't have ballots with names that they thought they should be voting for, for state representative. So there are multiple issues. It is a line by line difficulty. And we've only got 16,000 population in this county. And less than that actually vote because they have to be over 18. And I would say less than that are even registered and we have another system and it helps us with that and it's the statewide driver's license system. We have people trained in homeland security. You can go into those records and cross-check. This is a matter of line by line. And I think the first thing you do is start with mailing everybody because you can get that done and then you give them feedback. But this is totally unacceptable.
What do you mean by mail?
I email every single registered voter a letter that says that we've got problems with our voter rolls. And we need to clarify that you are a registered voter and that you live in Osage County where this poll book says you live, where this record says you live. And if they're deceased, then they shouldn't be on the register because our county is not that big, but we can't figure out who's passed this far and who's still there.
We pull from the both newspapers, the local and the speaker capital or obituaries, we can take them off by obituaries and there's also a cross-check with the Kansas Department of Health where they registered that stuff because I think it's the Department of Health. But there's a cross-check between the system and that. How many registered voters we have in our system? Approximately 11,000?
I email each of you a copy of the formal complaint that was filed at the Secretary of State's office when we're speaking in office. Those same names are in there so that you can have access to those people and ask them yourself. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yes.
So with whatever the issues were with some award issue, that stuff that's been kind of?
I don't know.
We're, if like I said, we're working with ESNS and we're going through those street segments to try to make sure that they're in the right place. Then we can print it in poll book and look to make sure that each person's in the correct poll book.
Because there was that little square over on the east side stating that that is what, that was where I blanked the issue.
The side of the county.
And that's, that's?
They just made a line across. Right, they made a line across and we, Becky can overlay that map onto a county map and she can pinpoint the houses. And that's what we need to try to figure out now. ESNS, that's what they call street segments. So like it could go from 300 Main Street to 600 Main Street. Okay, I'm just, I'm just using names. So if that street segment is cut by this, then we'll have to make new street segments. And we went through this process before the primary, but obviously we have problems on the streets.
So when the state changes the lines or the legislature, that doesn't cover the state that's?
They don't change the records. No, I mean, we, we've worked with the Secretary of State's office and ESNS.
What is ESNS?
Election Systems and Software, that's the software company that runs the election software.
So when she brought deceased people, how would they ever remove them if they started on deceased ballot?
They, they, I mean, you have to prove, you have to bring the driver's license.
That's what I'm saying, I don't think they bring the deceased.
Right. And there are people who die, unfortunately die outside of the county and maybe there's an obituary. The obituaries are being quite twisted and people don't want to pay for them anymore.
But the only way they can get away with that is like their ballot.
Right, and you still have the driver's license and sign it.
Or I mean, it's going to be, I don't see where the deceased ones could get through that wrong. The way the maps are on, that could be a problem, but how many of the elections we had, how many would even? The only election I'm thinking of in my own mind off top of my head, there's two elections that could be changed if there was something wrong in the way it was done. One would be the election rates and the other would be the original township or is that that one like 10 of those?
No, Ridgeway Township or the non-affected because they're too far north.
Okay, yeah, so they're all.
And the commissioner rates wouldn't have been affected because it, the whole precinct was in the commissioners. So if precinct was split by the house district, it's still a whole precinct, so that commissioner rate would still be on there if it were in the house race.
Right, so what would have changed about the house race?
People would?
The right name wouldn't have been on the ballot?
Right, they would have voted for 54 when they should have voted for 76.
Which would have been which part of the county?
The, which would have been right along with like the townships of Grant, Fairfax, and Junction, but Junction wasn't affected.
So they broke up the size of that?
Right, they broke up the precincts.
Okay.
They kept the precinct in half, but literally not half, but they cut it.
I'm looking at it and saying that.
Yeah, so I think it's a case.
So in this case.
I think in some cases, there were individuals who would have voted probably like, I think in some ballots, only wasn't on the ballot.
They got the 59 into the 76.
Right, so the candidate they might have wanted to vote for wasn't on there.
So it's hard to know about, or can't vote against two ballots?
Right, can't vote against, I mean, they did, in the primary, there was no one against the 50, the candidates for the 54 race.
But then I also think there's something you mentioned a while back about, something about if someone doesn't vote for so many years in a row or something, that also implies that that component that will take them off the rolls.
Right.
It indicates that either they don't live here.
Right.
Or what, so how do you take someone off the rolls?
You have to get, you have to eliminate them. You have to, you spin something out, actually they're not looking.
Because that's something you do like on an annual basis and look at individuals that haven't voted in a couple of years, what institution? Sorry, can I? Yes. Any other questions?
No, no. Well, your work, I think, all that.
Oh shoot, I am looking.
Well, your work, I think, all that.
Yes, we have.
And the state secretary of state's office contacted you about it?
I haven't talked to the secretary of state's office yet.
I just think that, I just got swarmed out.
We have about 10 minutes before Kate. Either you have any commissioner comments or anything?
I'm not hanging on to mine because I'm always like Scott Woods here next week. But I think when he's here, we need to, I went to spread on him, it's a very, very hearing this past week. And unfortunately, there's elected people that help understand exactly who the authority is. But yeah, they're being asked to vote on it, which is rather unfair. I would like Scott to come in and probably explain that to, to simplify that in our language terms for any individual to understand. I could say what I, how I think it works. There was some information that you can look at it from two different ways, but when we're on the university, helping with this, but when the revenue neutral gets cut out, that's a number that's given out by the state that we print for them because they sound like a fucking boss, correct? Or just talking about what process we're doing.
Okay, so when these ballots come out, then it assigns the revenue.
So that's that.
It assigns that number. So the?
Those, that does apply to the system.
It does apply to the system as far as there's a?
When you set child income out, it's in the system and the system calculates how much.
So the first thing that needs to be explained is that when the valuation goes up, then your mills are going to drop because you have to, you don't get that out of that clock. So if it's, to make it simple, you've got a $10 million evaluation today and your evaluation goes to $15 million, then your, your rate's going to drop. And that's not an option. That is what the state also, your rate is. So if you go in and you have a hearing, you say that's not your rate, then you're deceiving people because that isn't your rate. So if your rate is, let's say, went from, and I'm using numbers here, whatever, but let's just say the $10 million rate, this last year you like $10 million, you got whatever amount of money. The next year your valuation went up and to get that exact same number, they're going to reduce your mills, correct?
There's a formula.
So if they, if they change that, let's just say by seven mills, or whatever number you want to use, then that is your rate. Your rate is not whatever, if your previous rate was 60 mills, your new rate is 53 mills.
Right, so are you saying there are some entities who think that they're?
There are some entities that went to their revenue neutral grant rate and made it, and they said that that was not the rate, their rate was the original. So their increase was just barely above that. But that's not true because you got to figure out their increase, that it went from revenue neutral up, so you got to count, count those other seven mills in. So I use those examples. They could have reduced their mills by seven mills.
To make revenue neutral.
To, to be revenue neutral. So their starting point was 50 points something mills.
Which was last year's?
Exactly, that was their, no, that was, that was the new revenue neutral. That would have been their mill rate. And they're stuck in that. However, they chose to exceed, they went to revenue neutral. So the argument they were making though was that their, their mill rate is 57.5, it's not 50.5. I don't see how it is because that's your revenue neutral rate, you have to start from that number.
Well, how do they think it's 57?
Because that's what their mills was last year and they didn't, they didn't vote to refuse.
They voted by mill level.
They went by mill level, they did not do this correctly. The bottom line is, is that if that sheet comes out and it shows that number, that revenue neutral rate is your rate, it's not the number you had before. If you had 57 and a half mills the year before and your revenue neutral's 50, you got to work for 50 unless you have a vote or a hearing that will exceed that. So, but you can't say that it's mine if people will work, ours already fixed up to 5, we're not going to have a number. Yes, you are because the state automatically puts you at that number.
But they thought revenue neutral was if you stayed in the same memory as the previous year?
I don't know what they thought. I, I think they, again, this is where my point comes in and this is what, this is why like Scott to come in and explain, I think that we need to have, for the, for the people of Osage County, we probably ought to have every city council, every school board and get all of them together and have meetings with each town at some point in time with people that understand the revenue neutral rate, for nothing more than explain the revenue neutral rates to the elected people. Because when you take on the responsibility of being elected officer, one of your duties is to understand where you're voting on. And I'm telling them, when I went to be serious, there was more than one or two people on those boards that had no idea what they're voting on. And that to me is a big problem. So if you don't know, how can you vote on? It's just like, yeah, there was other questions we got about, how do you, how do you do a budget if you don't know how much money you transferred from before? So we had hundreds, so one had almost $1 million, another had $740, $750, but yes, that's more money. That's the stuff that you gotta, that people need to answer for. And that's why I think, the big thing is if you're, if elected people don't want to be educated, then we need to educate the public so the public knows exactly what's going on. And then the public can go, I don't know, sometimes, then get somebody else in there. And if the elected people don't want to know what it is, then why are you there? I mean, I can't, you can't just be there for whatever. I mean, I don't know if anybody else feels this way, but as far as if I'm going to be an elected official, just have to, I mean, to add something, I'll pitch a where I'm out. And I want to do what helps people the county and I think that's what we're all good at as well. Anyway, Bob Watson, Scott Woods here next week, I would like to have him explain how that works. And if there's anything else, we can agree to maybe set up some training classes and sit some people who want to come.
Well, and also being that this is the first year that the legislation's fully implemented, I'm assuming they're going to see what we're committing and I wonder if they refine some of the legislation.
I, I have reached out to a couple of people that operate the law or the statute. They're very happy with what's been going on and they're going to do something, they will try to get some stuff going on. But the bottom line is that the people still have the power because if we don't, if we don't like the way our elected officials are going, I don't know about.
Well, I, I like the legislation and the whole concept of it. I think it's really good. But when I got my R and R notification, it took me a little while to read it and be able to figure out exactly what it was mean. I mean, I, I read through all the graphs, it took me a little while. And that's with understanding the?
If you don't know what you're looking for, exactly.
And so I felt, I don't know, I had a little bit of a difficulty understanding.
There's a lot of information on that sheet because it shows, one shows, it shows the per revenue neutral, that shows proposed, then the difference in that below, it shows your last chance. So yeah, I mean, it can get very confusing very quickly. Here's what happens once, everybody thinks that when it's revenue neutral means that your taxes will not go up. That's not always a fix. Because if your evaluation of your house goes up, even if you're revenue neutral, your taxes are going to go up a little bit, but they're not going to go up substantially like they just did on this last one. But here's the backside of that is, the houses, the ones that went down in value, their taxes are going to drop. Because of revenue neutral, all that simply means that you're going to collect the exact same amount of dollars which you collected here before. If you're transferring a million dollars or $740,000, why do you need more money? And there's no reason to have more money. That's when there's, I, I don't know, again, I guess that's personal opinion, but.
I like the idea of trying to assist in educating the public on what this legislation is because it really is a tool for them to be involved and engaged and educated on each of the entities.
I think everybody is. I think it's good for all of them, but you know what, you can't, you can't make them come to a meeting, but you have an option there, though, elected handful. I mean, you do it in different branches because you set up one for each city and have a school, district, city, all on the same one. But you need the people here and maybe the people that wrote the law have them so that can explain how it works. And I think one of them is close enough to us, I think, who agreed up with the staff. I just think it would be something that would come along. You know, back to that all the time about this is that I've noticed that when I ran for school board, I don't, there's not a lot of names on that ballot, there's not a lot of people signing up to do that. There's not a lot of people signing up to city councils. There's not a lot of people signing up for any of these local offices and here's the problem with that. All of your tax dollars are handled by your local government. Every penny of your property tax is handled by local agencies. So when you have city council, you have county commission, you have school boards, you have all those races, people need to get on the ballot and stand up for that. And then, you know, sometimes you go, oh, I want to do that because I don't want to make somebody mad. Well, if you're doing the right thing, it doesn't matter. So I would ask everybody to take two minutes and just think about that. When it's election time, get on the ballot, get, get involved and help and do your part and maybe you don't have all these arguments of simple power.
Perfect timing if it's 9 o'clock. Kate, what do I have?
I have our quick contract, the letter of understanding between my county and Osage County. I just need one or two signatures. And I only have one copy, I don't recognize why I didn't print it, it's cut back and then just go over to the top.
Is that something you've been doing to?
That's something we've done for like 25 years.
Yeah.
I mean, it's.
Is there any change?
Yeah.
This is a blink of the contract.
Okay. There's no changes, basically just saying that we agree. Yeah. I'll have you read it and then?
Make sure we're not good enough.
It's something about your first question.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Making our middle legs do. And then when you're done reading it, I just need to have, I think Heather right now because you're filling in his chair right? So Heather would have to sign it and then Monica will have to sign it. And while he's reading that, can we do executive session or can we do a later?
If he is, if he's included in the executive section. How much time? How much time?
And so you, you do all these activities already?
Yeah, we do all of the WIC, um, stuff already.
When we contract for Shawnee County.
Can we do that? That might be, we might wanna do those. It's sort of saying the exact amount of time, but we just said roughly.
Give or take.
Yeah. The roughly provision.
Love me a lot of that.
Up to, but not exceeding.
Overback, over there.
With that contract, are we just partnering with them, or do they kind of oversee part of the program, or how's that?
Um, it's kind of both. So they actually pay us for, um, like Shelley, Chelsey, Becky's time. Uh, I don't do too much with WIC. I, maybe occasionally will help check something in when they come to the counter. Um, but Shelley, Becky, and Chelsea are hands-on with WIC. They provide us with the dietitian that comes and talks to WIC clients. They pay us for our staff's time.
So we keep track of their time?
Yes.
For those services, and they reimburse us?
Yeah.
For their
We get a check in monthly. Uh, they reimburse us for those hours. And then, um, they oversee the programming. So when they have, like, stash food over, and they, and they came and visited us at the health department, um, walked us through, like, their expectations, had any questions, and then, um, kind of guided us through, like, what they expected us under their leadership to. But other than that, it's pretty much just kind of like that. Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you.
Is there a, uh, start and end date? Like, is this an annual contract, or?
It is an annual contract. Um, they asked that we don't fill in the start date, because they haven't yet the start date, but it does end September thirtieth, in 2023.
I would move that we approve the WIC letter of understanding between Shawnee County and Osage County.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those saying aye. Motion carries. Sign it today, then. We can debate it. My daughter's birthday. My daughter's birthday. And is your executive session for personnel? So I would move that we recessed executive session under the following exception to Kansas Open Meetings Act pursuant to the non-elected personnel matter exception. The subject to be discussed would be an employee.
Uh, potential employee, yeah.
Potential employee. For a matter of ten minutes, open session will resume at nine fifteen a.m. And those included would be the commissioners, Kate Molyneux and counsel.
Sorry.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those saying aye. You have the static?
Yes, and I'm giving It helps me very well. If, I'm gonna leave the rooms on my phone ring, like, told in advance. It shouldn't, but maybe one time soon.
And what happened?
Sir.
Well, when I come, I just wanna make sure I stated this correctly, because the other guys, the other days
Yeah, yeah, just no binding action taken.
I guess. Say that we were still open session.
Regular session.
We're out of executive session. No binding action was taken, and we will resume open session. So we've got about fifteen minutes before running. Sorry, I'm trying to So I think we'll be minutes. Unless The Board of County Commissioners met in regular session on Thursday, September first, twenty twenty-two, with all members present. Becky Bartley, Lady Delman Director, met to present the letter of resignation effective September twenty-third, twenty-two. Rhonda Beetz, county clerk, presented a quote for a Dell computer loaded with Election System and Election Ware software. Motion was made by Cooter, seconded by Diver, to approve the purchase of a Dell computer with the Election System and Election software from Election System and Software. The three thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars to be paid from the election fund, although the die motion carried. Kelsey Winckie, clerk of District Court, met to discuss the flooring for the courtroom. Jeff Chris was also present. Motion was made by Bailey and seconded by Diver to pay overtime for a rate of twenty-five dollars per hour to Robert Hammerland and Jeff Chris to install the flooring in the courtroom, although the die motion carried. The following claims were allowed and checks issued in a total amount of seven hundred and six thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars in forty-four cents. Motion was made by Bailey and seconded by Diver to approve the claims as presented. Commissioner Bailey and Diver voted aye. Commissioner Cooter voted no. Motion carried. Commissioner Cooter read the minutes of August eighth, twenty twenty-two meeting. Motion was made by Bailey and seconded by Diver to approve the minutes of August eighth meeting as corrected, although the die motion carried. Commissioner Cooter read the minutes of August fifteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting. Motion was made by Cooter and seconded by Diver to approve minutes of August fifteenth, twenty twenty-two as corrected, although the die motion carried. Commissioner Cooter read the minutes of the August twenty-second, twenty twenty-two meeting. Motion was made by Cooter and seconded by Diver to approve the minutes of August twenty-second, twenty-two meeting as corrected, although the die motion carried. Commission, Commissioner Cooter read the minutes of August twenty-ninth, at twenty twenty-two meeting. Motion was made by Cooter and seconded by Diver to approve the minutes of August twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two minutes as corrected, although the die motion carried. Motion was made by Bailey, seconded by Diver to adjourn to meet in regular session on Tuesday, September sixth, twenty twenty-two, although the die motion carried. Any questions or corrections? I move we approve the minutes of September first, twenty twenty-two, as rated.
Seven.
Although the die.
Aye.
Aye. All of those. Motion carries.
I'm walking, looking out at it.
I said, I said it in the long term. Fred, you wanna read this?
I don't care.
Thank you.
September sixth, twenty twenty-two, Board of County Commissioners met in regular session on Tuesday, September sixth, twenty twenty-two, all members present. Public President Rhonda Harmon, Public Tom, Rhonda Harmon, Southern Township Treasurer, met to discuss two hundred and forty-fifth Street, Captain. Christine Foster, Treasurer, met to discuss resolutions for approval and present a new hire purchase orders for approval. Motion made by Cooter, seconded by Diver to adopt resolution twenty-two, case twenty-one, to cancel outstanding checks and warrants from twenty nineteen in the amount of four fifty-seven. Although the die, motion carried. Motion was made by Cooter, seconded by Diver to adopt resolution twenty-two, tax twenty-two, setting a refund policy for ongoing payment of fees paid to county offices. Although the die, motion carried. Motion made by Cooter, seconded by Diver to through the hiring Emily Smith as a part-time clerk in the treasurer's office, going in five hours or less per week at a rate of thirteen dollars and twenty-five cents. Although the die, motion carried. Motion made by Cooter, seconded by Diver to approve the purchase order thirty-seven, thirty-two, to seed our EMS for postage in the amount of five hundred dollars to be paid, half from the treasurer's line item of the general fund, and half from the motor vehicle fund. Although the die, motion carried. Motion made by Cooter, seconded by Diver to approve purchase order thirty-seven, thirty-four, to the Osage County Arrow. in an amount of thirteen thousand five hundred and thirty dollars for publishing the twenty twenty-one delinquent taxes to be paid from the Treasurer's line item of the General Fund. All voted I. Motion carried. Motion made by Cooter, seconded by Diver for purchase order number thirty-seven, thirty-three to No Way Inside, L L C, in the amount of two thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars and eight cents for appointment scheduling, software implementation, and first month in the amount of two, two thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars to be paid, half from the Treasurer's line item of the General Fund and half from the Motor Vehicle Fund. All voted I. Motion carried. Tammy Fader, General Public Transportation Senior Center Director, met to discuss the purchase of a computer for the Transportation Department. Motion made by Cooter, seconded by Bailey to approve purchase order thirty-seven, thirty-five to Dell for a computer in an amount of one thousand one hundred and thirty-one dollars and eighty-one cents to be paid from the General Public Transportation line item of the General Fund. All voted I. Motion carried. Motion was made by Cooter, seconded by Diver to approve purchase order thirty-seven, thirty-six to certified transmission in an amount of six hundred and fifteen dollars and eighty-four cents to replace renewed roses joints to be paid by from the General Public Transportation line item of the General Fund, but funded with a seventy-thirty reimbursement from K-Dot. All voted I. Motion carried. Caitlin Minor, Health Director, met to discuss COVID booster protocols. Ryan Fine, Public Works Director, met for weekly meeting. Items discussed were stop sign resolution and land acquisition for bridge sites. Motion was made by Cooter, seconded by Diver to meet in executive session with Ryan Fine, Public Works Director, and Amanda Coleman, Economic Development Director, from nine thirty-eight until ten fifty-three A.M. to discuss a matter of confidential data relating to financial affairs or trade secrets of corporation trusts and individual proprietorship for pertaining to a waste management grant. All voted I. Motion carried. Commissioners returned to regular session at ten fifty-three A.M. No action was taken as a result of the executive session. Motion made by Cooter, seconded by Diver to recess from the Board of County Commissioners meeting to a public building commission meeting from nine fifty-three A.M. until ten A.M. Commissioners reconvened as Board of County Commissioners on, at ten thirty-eight, or ten A.M. Matt Booker, County Fraser, met to discuss a mapping contract with Kimball Mappin. Motion made by Cooter, seconded by Diver to give a ten-day written notice to U R Solutions for mapping Westside Maintenance and G I S Support Agreement. All voted I. Motion carried. Motion made by Cooter, seconded by Diver to enter into an agreement with Kimball Mappin for mapping services at the cost of eighteen thousand dollars per year, eighteen thousand five hundred a year, effective as soon as possible. All voted I. Motion carried. Haley Harshaw, Executive Resident for CAS, met to discuss the CAS program. Becky Bartley, Land Development Director, Matt Booker, Fraser, and Amanda Coleman, Economic Development Director, met to discuss land development director position. Motion was made by Cooter, seconded by Diver to meet in the executive session with Becky Bartley, Land Development Director, Matt Booker, Fraser, and Amanda Coleman, Economic Development Director, from ten forty-two A.M. until eleven fifty-eight A.M. to discuss a matter involving identifiable non-elected personnel to protect the privacy or rights of the individual and discuss a candidate for the land development director position. All voted I. Motion carried. Rhonda Beetz, County Clerk, was called into the executive session from ten forty-six A.M. until ten forty-seven A.M. Commissioners returned to regular session at ten fifty-eight A.M. No action was taken as a result of the executive session. Chris Wells, Chair, Brett Lewis, Communication Director, Aaron Horseton, Motorola Solutions, and Troy Flair, T F M Communications, met to discuss the buildings for housing and radio equipment at tower sites. Motion was made by Bailey, seconded by Diver to accept a bid of a hundred and eighty-one thousand one hundred and fifty dollars for the buildings to be paid from the Capital Improvement Fund as the sheriff looking into paying a portion with the nine eleven fund. All voted I. Motion carried. Discussion was held on budgets and policies. Motion was made by Bailey, seconded by Diver to adjourn to meet in regular session on Monday, September twelfth, twenty twenty-two. All voted I. Motion carried.
On page one, page one. Motion made by Cooter, it says nine thirty till ten fifty, that should be nine fifty-third. And then their, Commissioner returned to regular session, nine fifty-three A.M. And then at the bottom, it says ten forty-two A.M., but I love to believe that should say until ten fifty. So just time investment, so.
I have objection from should be a. I move that we approve the minutes from the September sixth, twenty twenty-two meeting as read and corrected.
Seven.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all of those same side. Motion carries.
Well, I also have to go after.
Ryan Fine?
Yes.
Public Works Director.
Stop signs on. When I found out the other day that they were only a lot in, they might be some days behind, but they're quick catching up quickly. I heard that last time, I remember about ten days back.
There's no major problems.
There's nothing that sounds like it's gonna be.
I just, I've had a couple people come to me and tell me these major issues have occurred and I said, well, we've not mentalized anything, but I will pass.
The, the rumor was, it was a major spring.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not, that's not.
I would now.
I was like, I hope it don't go down. But yeah, they, they've watched the progress on asphalt and stuff, so I think they're getting good action and stuff, so that's, that's good there.
I just haven't got that.
Yeah. Should be woke in by. I would like to, I have a person that's very interested in recycling position, I have open. Her name is Christina Laker. And I would like to study her at that. She has both of us experience, she has worked Garrett, so she's familiar with Starholder and Sacking.
That's the one.
The one here. She worked for Garrett's Fire Department, so it was her last name.
New or someone that's.
Yeah. J R left probably. I think I've heard, still living. I've just been sliding people over there since it kind of slowed down on certain. Um, I think as soon as, soon as we can, so we kind of put the date on there, which started twenty-first, that would be the pay period.
So I would move that we approve the hiring of Christina Laker for the as recycle solid waste department.
Yeah.
At a rate of fourteen dollars per hour with the effective date of nine twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all of those same sides. Motion carries. We all.
So I get your staff there, so now we're all, so many staff work, or that's true.
We're on grid, we're still down on.
I noticed that letter in there. I think you're wasting your time about that. And here's what I'm saying. The part that says C D L.
Do we all sign this?
Just.
Not this year. Somebody, and maybe this word, maybe talk about this, but in my opinion, if we're gonna put that in there, that maybe we should have the option that we will pay them to get their C D L, we'll pay to get them those C D L.
Right.
Which is gonna be expensive because you've got the new training halls. But with that, we can have them sign a contract that stays.
Sometimes.
And then we'll pay for the C D L licenses.
And sometimes you can do it a little bit backwards where you can, say if you come home and you get your C D L, and then when you're here for so many months or whatever the time period, then they get reverse for that and that gives them, it's a similar thing, it's just a little bit.
The problem is though, is a lot of those people aren't gonna have the money. If they have that option, they're gonna go somewhere else. The C D L license, it's got pretty expensive.
The long train.
Yeah, yeah, so they don't have the money to take that, to find out their own pocket or, yeah, and did that. And then we had a contract with them, a bit of a stay for, for two years, and they didn't have to pay back the train.
Just to satisfy our commitment with the person.
Yeah, because you're gonna spend six, or six dollars.
Um, can we get that trainer board done, whether we can train our own?
What's that?
There's a way that you can become a trainer.
Yeah, there's a way that we can have somebody that's certified trainer.
Okay.
They gotta go through some classes.
Let's get, see if someone will willing to do that. And then we can help out the local cities too.
When you and I talked about that, you said something about the liability of that person.
It stays with them for a couple of years. That trainer is attached to that person, so if somebody that left that can come back on, the county's trainer, so you want to make sure that the length of time that window is that they have to stay with us, so it's, you know, that way that person that trained them.
Which I worry about.
Is. We have a very high team, so that's refined us.
Outside of.
We extend, I mean, something after that. And that's just our. And the person that volunteers to be the. So that would be.
Was really. You want to know?
No, I, I don't have a class A. So we need a class A, that way we can cover everything.
I, me personally, that's what I think. I mean, I think that might help us in the work.
Yeah.
Because I think there's some good people out there that might take the job if we could offer, or we would help them get the C D L.
Yeah.
Or, you know, the part that says, it says they have to have a C D L, we're paying, we're paying, and they have to have a C D L, they go somewhere else with a C D L, like that. So we're helping with that work, or come up with another, have a resort. Does every job up there have to have a C D L? They're all.
No. No. No, and we have another one retiring this month. We have another one.
Well, the reason I, the reason I say that, when you read the ad, it says if you don't have a C D L, we're always gonna come by, because it says I have to have a C D L. So I would give that part either out of there or put it in there to change the C D L attorney, would we offer, yeah. To me, I think it's a benefit to the county that we could offer that and as long as that's on contract, as long as it was here, you know, a couple of years, that would justify.
So that, how would we, if, I have a question for Ryan. So if we were to do that, you know, how would we do that contract with their employment? That's just an additional requirement. They would sign?
Yeah.
If we pay for that and if they, whatever period that they have to stay on?
Yeah, I mean, you can do that any number of ways. I mean, sometimes if they don't stay long enough, then they may be. But yeah, that's our way, so just go ahead and approach them.
Yeah, so if that's something we need to do, you can write something down.
Yeah. Yeah, and like I say, I want to dig in a little bit further to see how that trainer's name is attached to that. Right, it's a statute list, how many years. I, I think I heard for Franklin County, it's like a two-year thing.
So.
They said it's not as big a deal as what you think, but, you know.
Right.
People would say that all day long until something comes up.
Yeah, well, Franklin County, would they be wanting to turn off people? Or do we have that problem of what we're just.
I, I think we could get, um, right online, have the trainers do the class online.
Because we're, I'm concerned about the other counties knowing somebody else because a lot of it is, because they're gonna pull off there.
Yes, they're gonna wanna do, they're training, they're gonna wanna make sure that they're only training their people that's driving under their.
Well, I would advise it because if you're the county, I mean, and I'm thinking about this around step in there, come on, but if the counties have a trainer that we're training our people for C D Ls, I don't think we want to open up a lot of vote in the county and training other interviews people on C D Ls.
Yeah, and I mean, you can set up end education agreements if you wanted to have, or some of that memorandum of understanding with other other counties just saying, look, we're, we're training them, but you're gonna hold us high and we're sending them by, so that's a issue. So you can take care of.
I would, I would just limit people within the county, driving a trash truck or something for oxidations.
Yeah, I'm wrong, I. There are plenty of them. The, the understanding, get the law. That's, I think that might, that is more than.
I'd have to, yeah. At least if we keep them down for a couple, two, three years or something, at least we it will be, as soon as trainers are, things dry, they're gone.
Well, these guys are all looking on there, I said, my ads on paper, what they're, your truck drivers going with their chart for.
And it gets them some miles too, you know, you have to have so many road miles.
And they get paid by the training. Instead of paying, they're getting paid for it, so I think it's a real one for everybody, I think. And I would offer that to the current boards that you have.
Right.
Those current boards that don't have a C D L, they'll send you.
Yeah. I thought, one of them doesn't have.
What's the timeframe on the training and what's the fees?
Uh, the, the fees, it's, it's gonna be a lot less than like a school would be. I mean, the fees, it's just gonna be whatever endorsements you're covering through the state of Kansas for your license. I don't believe there's anything entered that, that I don't know much about.
Yeah, we're doing the training, if you're, I've heard, we're not gonna train customers, so if you talk to.
How long is the training?
Um, it, it probably depend on their learning ability to be able to pass the test, the written part of the test. One, the endorsement parts are pretty easy on those tests, uh, but your main thing is your air brakes in your general knowledge test, that's your biggest portion.
Those are tests that take online, if they're, do they have driving?
Yeah, there would be driving too. There would be driving.
Which is a part of.
Little party and. Um. Back into the out of dock area.
So do you like my offering C D L training that would help you get?
Oh, I think so.
So do we need a motion for that at all?
Um, yeah, I mean, that's probably a good idea.
So I would make a motion that we allow, or a rich partner or any other partner needs it for that matter, for C D L training involved, that the county would pay for that C D L training for any employee that wishes to do that, new or current employee. Uh, as long as there's an agreement signed in place with that employee that they will reimburse the county that did not stay fully employed for a period of two years.
Okay, and it was two years, they they will reimburse the county for the training if they leave employment within two years.
Correct.
Okay, just wanna make sure I have the timeline.
And I guess you'd have to be that percent, but I don't know how you do that, I think that's something you can put in, I feel that one. That's Ron's part.
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all of those same sign. Motion here.
Hopefully that does help.
Yes.
I would make sure we allowed uh.
And I don't think that's a question, see how long the trainer portion takes for the training, I don't think it's that long. Berkeley sent this to me, they had a meeting. On August twenty fifth meeting and. It wrote it in two weeks ago, they are wanting to. Move a portion of the road to minimum maintenance. Uh, our bike township, it's on two ninety third street, there's some bridges. There are smaller bridges, so that they'd be on that and they don't have the funds to replace the bridges, so they are looking. For this to be turned to minimum maintenance road. Um, probably, i- it just kind of releases liability to that, I think it's, it's not a very. Area.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just one of those places where it finally goes in, they'll probably just break down and they can just. Yeah, it's just a dirt road and it's that one that was in question when they were working on on seventy bridge. And they were going around there, it it was presented to the court, it closed that road.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, up there, um, that was, we had pictures.
Yeah, I've got a couple questions hard. I don't think we voted to close this road today, I think all we're gonna is publish an hearing and affect the project.
Yeah, yeah, it's not a closer at all, all of this is.
But even within the. We have, well, we're scheduled hearing, a public hearing, but they come and people.
I have a question, that is a township route.
Yes.
So it is the county's responsibility to authorize a change in the road status, it's not a township.
It is for minimum maintenance because you're um, taking liability away from a separate.
Okay, that's what you were just saying, right, I missed that part, so even though it's a township route, for that to occur, the county has to approve it.
We have, well, we're having a hearing.
Yeah.
Been made, all we're doing is having a public hearing to have anybody that wants to come talk about, that lives on that road, they can come in here.
So then we don't authorize, but this is just the process of getting the hearing process.
Correct.
Okay, I meant, I thought you were wanting us to authorize it, I don't think we had that authority to do that.
We have, I think all we have to schedule a hearing, and we can vote, tell them, do we, or do we have a vote at all?
Yeah, um, well, ultimately, there, you have to put up the sign and everything, so there'd probably be some kind of resolution associated with it to post the. Minimum maintenance sign where you travel at your own risk or whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there'd be some.
Cuz I I wasn't aware that you had to go that route on that cuz.
Well, we had some, I know there was an issue. That was a couple of years ago, the people that, all of that, when they come inside, they weren't. They weren't noticed by.
Oh, yeah, that was closing the road.
And they closed it, yeah, so I think. I think, but I think it's still kinda the same thing, it's you take a road breaker out, make sure you're changing the whole schedule like road, so. And the statute says you gotta be hearing, but what's the hearing for?
Yeah, any property owners along the road, objecting about it, object to it, um, that's, that's really what it comes down to.
So it's, it's you have an hearing, do you have to mail notice to them or just an ad?
Yeah, so you publish, I think publish the notice, so yeah, um. So you adopt the resolution and then publish notice that you're going to have the hearing. With the date and time specified in the county newspaper and anyone, you know, wanting to give evidence or testimony can do so. And then. So you actually, we do need to do a resolution on the front end to publish, so you do a resolution at the hearing. And then you probably have a resolution on the back end that the passage say, to post the sign and everything.
Is there already a date in there for the?
No, we're not so vague. We're not, they're long enough, we don't have a proper notification.
Yeah.
So.
I think you just have, the only we want to say publish it.
Right.
Sorry, you wanted us to be back today, do you have a date in mind or is this something you need to look at?
We need to draft a resolution to live the date time to actually publish that, so we.
Sure you were behind it, but it's not like it's gonna be. I think that, probably most of the people that are on that route are.
That's the one that's the core ground known to both sides. Definitely trying to close and before one of these fall.
I bet the game.
That's still.
You want by the bridge?
Well, yeah, uh, town, our place still has that road, but they were trying to get the board to close it.
Well, I thought they were putting barricades up.
Oh, yeah, yeah, nervous barricades on it for a little while, it's temporarily closed trying to.
So there's no problem, there's no, there's no people that live on it, so it's all.
Is that the one that floods?
Yes, yeah, it's like when they close the ready bridge.
It's the one that people were driving it when there was the bridge.
Right, yeah, yeah, when they had that, the state highway bridge, they were jumping over there to that first.
And the problem is that's, the bridge is so small that it's a township, it's not county.
The township doesn't have the money to put it back to as is, in a sense, it's a flood issue and the court doesn't wanna do anything to it.
Well, they, we already did a resolution that gave that road. That they, they wanted us to prove that we're supposed to get that road done. Before.
Well, it makes sense if it floods all the time because. And it just tears it up every time.
So we're wanting to.
So now they went to the step to try to make it. So that was a. Very rare issue that. Sorry. Um, we're doing a bridge landing October thirty first. For the three box bridges that we discussed earlier, um. Harry Thompson's. Land purchase came in today. Um, we've started that process of the um. Condemning right of the area by Birmingham.
Yeah.
And that's all been filed, that is filed in court, right? Yeah, I think that.
Which one? Yeah, so we have to file, it's a natural lawsuit.
Okay, that's, that's been filed already.
No, no, I mean, we have to talk about how how we can do that, I mean, it's a, it's a separate legal action, so. I mean, if the county wants to contract that out, but it, the petition has to be filed in court and then. It'll work through the entire legal process before that that can begin. So the court has to get appraisals and determine what the reasonable value is of the land.
Okay, we probably need to start that.
Yeah.
Process.
So is that something that council does, is that something like the county attorney would do?
No, I mean, so it would be the the county that actually initiates it, the question is, I mean.
It's not part of our contract.
No, no, I mean, so we can contract it out separately, we can, we can do it, it's just how how the county lawsuit proceeds with it. But you've already adopted the resolution saying that you want a petition filed, so it's just a matter of how how to proceed.
This question is, who, who's gonna provide that service?
Well, I think it's a, oh, I, I, the person would want that, it's that, and it's even better in this case because I don't think we'd wanna get a local attorney on that.
Um.
I think it's a lot better to keep it with our county counselor. Yeah, it just makes a lot.
So then that's just an additional contract.
Yeah, we'll just do an additional engagement on that.
I mean, I don't do it for probably thirty bucks an hour, so if you ever do.
Yeah. All right.
It's hard to set the process and. If we were to branch on a stock, we're probably not stuck that fast.
Starts, it's automatically going to, we can still proceed with the bridge, but that everything. Oh, okay, that it's, since we've started this process, once it gets filed. Um, all we're doing is waiting for that stuff and the land's still gonna be paid out. Right. Right, okay, so. And they said that doesn't actually click through, or doesn't actually build up the process because it's going to sell, it's just. What amount.
Right, okay. Are the landowners aware, the county passed the resolution that we're proceeding that route?
Yeah, he.
And they didn't budge?
He, he went up there and talked to her one time and said, you know, this is going on, this is coming through, this, they asked the. Resolution to move forward with this, and she was like, she, she was standing firm. Um, we were brought up that he was like, there's gonna be legal fees and stuff now, where this. Yes, to walk away is going to change, cuz now you're gonna have extra fees entered.
Yeah, sometimes they come back to the table.
Yeah, we, we tried it one more time, so. Yeah, that, I'm sure, I, I figured that.
Yeah.
So. I mean, we didn't wanna go that way.
Well, I know, but that's.
So that's, that's all I have, so. And uh.
Oh, good.
In that, those three bridges, one of those bridges. And that would be bridge one twenty five.
Yeah, that's October.
Yes, yeah, and we got one thirty four, two twenty one and one twenty five, all those are on the bridge. One's a fair one and one twenty five, that's the one thirty four. Two twenty one is two hundred and sixty first and twenty five. Um, I've been in contact with line of coffee. They are getting ready to move the poles, we're gonna do, I think I'm gonna do a locate, we're gonna clear some trees. To offset some of the cost, where they're gonna be the poles too. So, uh, we have the plans for all three of those bridges, so we're moving forward with that part of it.
And I can go ahead and generate the, the resolution on the hearing for the minimum maintenance, if you wanna set a date for how long we can. I can just send that to Ron, but I'll type it up now and pass that today, so we don't hold it up.
Yeah.
Who would hold them to hearing if it's something during? So just be during the.
Yeah.
So if we gave a plenty of time, we could make that during the tenth or seventeenth, October, that would start a public, plenty of time, we could have a five. It sounds like it's a record.
Can you do the publication and publication?
Yeah, you have to describe the road um, in the resolution and then you send it to the plan, planning commission for its recommendation, so they'll have to make a recommendation. As well.
That's fine, cuz the guy's signature on there is the chairman of the.
So charity.
So they need to consider before the hearing's held, their meeting is the sixth. So if we publish, if you're gonna finish it today and we publish on the twenty second, that would give people two weeks before the zoning meeting. And then is there a time that says they?
I think, does that require zoning first?
Yeah, before you're, you're, you're.
So, so October sixth, they can look at it.
So then.
We can take action on the tenth to start here.
Okay, is there, if there is no limit on how long, because zoning commission needs, then they could give their recommendation on the tenth, I suppose. What's the order you told your hearing?
On the seventeenth.
Uh, do it on the seventeenth?
Yeah, I think that's what you were saying is do the.
We'd have a hearing probably later, have a hearing on the twenty fourth, thirty first on those two. Yeah, and we're gonna have.
Okay.
So then it won't be published till the thirteenth, so you wouldn't have to have a call.
No, cuz we're pub, I okay, Friday night, I'm not gonna be in public, we're gonna publish this week in the newspaper. The zoning board's gonna hear. The resolution.
We're not gonna publish anything, that's what, because we can't make our resolution type council finding zone.
I thought he said. I thought he said.
You do the resolution first describing the road and then send a copy of the resolution to planning zoning for their recommendation, they make a recommendation and they can have it public here.
So we're gonna publish this week, zoning gonna hear it on the sixth, it would give them a chance to report back on the tenth, so you could probably. Hold the hearing as early as the seventeenth, I mean, the tenth would probably work, but.
I mean, you could combine them all together, have one hearing where planning and zoning gives their recommendation in the public. Give their, their thoughts if you wanted to, uh, there's no.
So you could do like the tenth at nine thirty, or no, that's Ryan's time, at nine.
I'd be careful whatever you're planning to attempt, because we're also gonna ask them how to step down, planning zone, so I would wait till we know the more. I would move that to the seventeenth.
Yeah.
Okay, so the seventeenth.
I mean, it's not, it's not that big of a nation, it's not. Not unless we go to six hundred and twenty, I guess, I think so.
Yeah.
Then we'll close the sort of.
We shouldn't start.
Tammy. Your only item A, personnel thinking session. That's something you can do in about five minutes. So we can do that, then I'll give time for the rest of this. I mean, we recessed executive session under the following exceptions to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, pursuant to the non-elected personnel matter exception. With the subject to be discussed is an employee, yeah. Possible new employee. For a matter of five minutes, open session will resume at ten oh five, those to attend will be commissioners, council. Stephanie Burdette and Tammy.
Sorry.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all of those same.
You wanna keep this resolution up? Took pictures of it.
Okay.
Looks like.
Yeah, it is.
Right, so Ryan, the, the resolution, let's catch it after the executive session. Okay, yeah, let's catch it after. Cuz I don't think that they're actually having a hearing of land and zoning, they're just considering it.
Okay, I thought it had to be almost twenty one days.
Well, and see the resolution is in their publication, it's the county. Well, and see, the resolution is in their publications, the county publication. And county publications can take effect on publication. Like if it says it.
Does it have to go out in the zoning board first, right?
Right, but I don't know that it's a, it's not like a conditional use permit, it's not. No, they're going to make a road and then they make up road. So it's just a recommendation for them, so I don't honestly know if it has to be. I don't know that they do a publication, this is the county's publication, and the county just says, and the zoning board will look at.
So why do you do that publication?
No, we're doing that, I mean, we're doing that publication.
The attorney's preparing it and we'll.
They're switching roads.
But we will ask him about the zoning, as far as that they're just giving recommendation, make sure that you don't have any other publication. I think because the county's saying, the county's doing this in front of it and it's this, then I think we're okay, but we'll check or try. And then she, I mean, I think. Well, I think, of course, we keep this long, a lot of things. There used to be, before. But that was about that. So. Can I, he, Amanda, can I be doing ours or me enjoying ours or me? Or anybody who's doing yours, they need. I mean, I, I think you can, but that might be, yeah, let's do this, that's probably showing you.
Okay.
Yeah, that'll work. I think we did it, I just didn't remember how we did it. You guys going to do a rest stop? Yes, and then on the front page, right under the, sure, this workout, so it's in link. And then I think we have to fill out all the information.
I mean, let's get safe. If you, if you need some, it's a new published as well, the statute is. So the resolution, the resolution is the comments, um, the mention of the declaration process, and so, um, we can include in that.
So that's too late, so you'd have to go to their, they're discussing this, will they have a meeting in the month of October or not?
Um, I don't know, right off the top of my head, if, I think it's on half, yeah, that's, I think it's the week of Halloween, so it is the last week of the month.
Okay, so.
I don't know they exactly, right off the top of my head.
Okay. The 25th, or the 25th would be the Tuesday.
I think that's it, but I'm not cheating, don't pull me off, I don't know for sure.
You just want to cheat with that.
So perhaps not even the resolution today.
Because I think it has to be published by tomorrow.
So we are out of executive session, no binding action was taken, and we'll resume open session. I would move that we approve the hiring of Brian Grag for the general public transportation department at eleven dollars as a part-time driver, effective day nine nineteen.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all of those saying aye.
Hey, everybody, good.
Okay. Trying to think, are we all?
Maybe I'll start with a song. Go around.
Who, or who is, who would you?
Linda's on the office today.
So is there anybody from the sheriff's office? Are you representing which management chair?
Just really.
And then, so Linda's out, county attorney, is that anyone else? Can you take a paper and see if she can? Sure.
I'll make a copy, I'll get a copy of the. I have a question.
Yeah.
I'm going to do it to me.
Uh, Amanda, or whoever, she would like that up on the big screen.
What, what do you want? So, let me share my screen. So.
You could ask him or anyone that works on the budget if they would be available. Do you need to open up a browser?
Okay.
Can you?
Okay, please, I'm. Show them. So she worked with the budget?
Okay. Thank you.
Katie, because we need, she's the head shop.
Oh, I.
I tried to.
One of us have been true. Individuals? Do you need to open a browser?
No.
I'll just get everything open so then we can. I think we're just.
Oh, he says it's not, when it says it's 10:30.
Well, that's the elected department head meeting, and then at 10 is the demo with all the departments. So if, if anyone in his office might be available to run down, would be great. Anyone from attorney's office?
Well, they said Monday they have documents, so they can have you on the.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and get started, there's a couple people that are still coming down, but.
Okay. So, good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Danny Train, I'm the computer information process, which is your finance, uh, software vendor. So I understand we're going to talk about budget prep today, and by using budget prep, what is and do, where the department is, right? So with that being said, the county has, and they can do seven steps if they want. Uh, I'm using another Kansas county, Harvey County, they only do three, they do initial, they do recommended, and adopted. But I have others that do initial, department head, recommended, board approved, and adopted. So you can have as many as you want. But what's nice about this, whoever's doing the budget can come in here and they can do the expense worksheet, and they can export this expense worksheet. And when they do that, and they can do it by funding the department, when they do that, it will build a spreadsheet that can come out and they can email to each department. So what does that do for you? That lets you go in and put what you think you would like to have for the budget, and any notes to justify why you want that changed. That make sense? When you're done with that spreadsheet, then you can send it back in, email it back to whoever's doing the budget, and all they will do is come back in here to the application. And they will import that budget worksheet. Okay? So if you have notes, you just got here and start to pull in each worksheet, if there is notes on that, and I think I have another one here, so let's see. They can, then whoever's doing it, let me go put another one. Because it'll show that note. So that's open to budget. And this is what the actual budget, whoever's doing the budget, this is what they're going to see, and what's really nice now, there is going to be a change because we're in the new release of current, when you get this, we're going to actually show you where you are with your budget and your worksheet. That make sense? So you can see that, right now, they would have to send you a report, we don't want that, we want it all in one spot, so when the department heads get it, they know. But what's nice about this is that here's their current year budget, right? Current year actual, so I can see that right now they're a little bit over. No, not quite, but you can know these expensive revenue totals all throughout this, whoever's doing that budget, and actually see where they're at with their actual totals for each line item. Okay, so let's go down to an expense line item. Now, and that's something else we'll talk about here in just a little bit. Let's just. Let's travel. Say. One, that's it. Extra. Okay? Exit. Yeah. And we'll be running that report. It now is going to have that re, it's going to have those notes on there for whoever. Whoops, sorry about that. So whoever's doing the budget, the measures can see why they would like to have that maybe increase or decrease. But what does this budget have, give you the size, the ability, uh, the ability to keep from keying in every number when it comes in from the department heads. So, but it also gives you some nice reports, so you can get a budget preparation report by department. So by department, you can see, this is the revenue, go to the next one. A little bit bigger for you. So with that being said, that's still. Should, we're just making sense. Back down. We'll do. Now. That. So there's some of your expenses. So with that being said, they're in step four, they're recommended, so for 22, this is their data code for Harvey County. So with every step, if you have multiple steps, you can see every step that you're in at that time, the department heads can. So we can. Whoever's doing the budget, that's me on the spreadsheet, maybe those people who don't have access to the CIC, but those of us that do, that can get right into the budget prep, right? Or not. That would be probably up to the, 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 whoever's doing it, who's going to do the budget, you know, entry, the verified stuff, incorrect, who's doing that this time? Usually the clerk, but is that the way it still will be, or is it will be?
I'm sure I've said.
Okay, so as it comes in from the department head, um, you could, but it's not secured down to where you, that review come in to that entry level to see it. That's why we produce the worksheet, the Excel spreadsheet that goes out to each department, and she's not going to key it in anyway, she's just going to bring that spreadsheet right back in. You will key in this spreadsheet, okay? But the nice thing is this report here, when you're working on your budget, because it's going to give you five years of history. It also gives the commissioners that, so they can see.
So where, how do you get the five years, then you're going to have that?
It's there, there you have it.
The target.
Already there.
So would that be, so like that data would be available to the department heads, and so if they're looking at each of their line items, they could look to see.
Yes.
If every year it's pretty.
I agree.
They should, like, let's say you have one line item and every year it's really pretty close to the same amount, they know a good idea of what they need to request. There could be a different line item, and it's just all over the board, and they would need to determine, okay, next year, what are the indicators or factors that?
You're right, quite much, because this is going to show the actual, so you, you know, the past, the past years will show actual. So like this one started out at 350,000, then it moved to 423,000, or 56, so you can see in the salaries how that happened. But yes, each department head can have this report.
But this is broken down from what we have identified as one.
This is line items, now, right now, what you're seeing is going to be contractual, commodity, personal services, and capital. So I don't know how, and every county that we've done, confident OTR, that's the only way they have, okay? So, but we can switch, we can work with the county, and we have a set of, uh, target account that we can help with work with, and you can break those out. Because what it does for you is it gives each one of you, uh, let's go back into finance, because this is a report. If you have CIC on, you can get, because we could, uh, secure this now just to report. And with that being said, in here, by department, and that's just pick. I can have it in summary, I can have it in detail, I can have it from period one to period, so I can say all periods, period 13. Now, I've only got through February, this is when I pulled their data, but what's nice about this, let's find it a bit. Is department heads can actually see whether, so they have telephones, see how this is broke out? They have everything broke out, so they have telephone broke out, child. So they have telephone broke out, travel, other purchases. As a department head, you would know what, instead of contractual, your phone, your phones in there, any leases you have in there, anything you've got that way. Commodities would be any of your supplies, or, but it's not broke out, so you don't know how much you've spent on telephone, or training, or anything like that. So by breaking this out, so by breaking this out, this will allow you, by line item, to actually budget for line item, and to have it broke out throughout the year.
So then, let's say that is each department kind of determined their line item.
Uh huh.
Then, but at the same time, you can run a detailed report, but then you could also go back to run kind of the aerial view of just the three line items.
Yes, we do have that as well.
So both reports will be available, so even if you do more detail.
Yep.
You can then run a more broad report after that.
The other thing I like is this, this report here is extremely nice. It's called Budget Satisfied Funded Department. Now, if it's getting towards the end of the year, this is one that the commissioners kind of like, but if it's getting towards the end of the year, anything that's set out in pending, for instance, any receipts that the treasurer has set out there at this time, any accounts payable, but they haven't been processed. They hit the ledger yet? But it's going to show this pending file. You're actually going to know, you're ending what, when that all gets processed, where you're at.
So is that new? Is that one of those new ones they, oh, okay, we can count out, okay.
This is one that, probably about four, five years ago, that, I can't remember what county, but it was a pretty big县的commissioner's. So, and I remember doing tapes in Allen County, where the clerk's office pulling out the accounts payable, running the tape, so I can give them the number. When this is paid, this is what you have left. So it's a nice report.
So the report you have up there before that department issue, or insurance costs, and that's, like, right now, we have the fourth, uh, not. So it's not an each individual report, so would that move into that?
If it was me, I would. But that again is up to the commissioners.
Well, that's what I'm asking. Is that something that's small places that they do that, or did they do it?
Most of them do a breakdown, so each department knows what they're spending on personal services and fight that Medicare.
Right, because that does, and our current management is not showing that.
No, you're just.
Well, I think, I think employee benefit, it wants it all into employee benefit line. But tell me the pros and cons of, I mean, tell me what the benefit is of moving it to each department.
Well, first of all, each department understands what their expenses for their budget is on that. Other than that, I mean.
So it goes under the personnel, it's a detailed part of the personnel line.
Yeah, it is. Pull that back up.
They just shows an hour of things, not the only expense, because you have your benefits all built into that also.
You have our checking and all of that stuff that would be broken down.
The drug screening and.
Wherever department.
Yeah, because when I get a report, when I get the drug screening report, the bill and the, and the, 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 I identify what department, each one of them. So that when they go in, so when Ronda gets the bill, she knows which department.
To assign it to.
Should be paid for that, yeah.
So, see, they have everything broke out in each department. This is county commission in Harvey County. So their regular salaries, their workhorse compensation, their social security, their pension, their unemployment insurance, health insurance, dental vision. The other thing too is when you're, when you're doing the payable, and you're off somewhere, you know, with this broke out, like in dental, instead of all being services, I mean, it's a little easier to track now.
So is that what most counties, do they do it like that?
Most of them change, when they change, from the old ASMR, and a lot of do it. And we have sometimes kept it. I mean, they were used to it, and they kept it. But a lot of them after that have changed, because they can see the reports they can give. And we've helped them. We can, we have sets of chart of accounts that we can give to Rhonda, because the chart of accounts gives the clerk's responsibility to fund, and so forth. So, but we've got those, and we've got set up. I would not do it here at the end of the year. I would do it at the beginning of the year. I would take a couple of months to get it all lined out.
Yeah, we talked about it several months ago, and Rhonda said that for preference, we're starting in next year.
Absolutely.
Kind of why we're kind of doing these things now in preparation.
Okay.
But we have not set, I don't think we have a set.
Okay, and that's fine. I'm looking. It gives the budget adjustment report, there's just lots of things we can get.
We also, as an apartment, we'll be always standing on our budget each month.
Yeah.
Which would be nice to put away in the later expenditure, which would justify. We haven't spent this much, and we can bring it to the.
Oh, we have that happen.
Yeah, you just don't cover the first.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But everybody else gets their sheets and shit where they ought to.
Here is what you guys are used to seeing right now. Basically. Which, this used to be called the Kansas budget report. I don't use my mouse a lot, it'd be very often, so. So when you get down here and just, there you go. Like after the county election, personally on contractual commodities, capital, like, that is what you're used to seeing right now. And you can still get.
That's kind of a nice area for you to see sometimes, just as a thing. But yet, if the detail was there, I think that would help the departments.
I mean, and I'm. I think I've heard that the sheriff's office, or the sheriff's, your clerk kind of keeps a spreadsheet of like your travel and things like that, and so on, right, and so whatever. So you're doing that, so having this done, but she wouldn't have to do that. Because when the AP is done, that would all be tied to that travel, or training, or whatever it might be. Yeah.
And with the chart of accounts for each department, it wouldn't, it wouldn't look the same for every department, would it? They would, I mean, some, some departments are much smaller, would only have.
Maybe telephone utilities.
And then others like.
Oh, yeah. Your sheriff's office is going to be a big one, and your road bridge is going to be the next big one. Then sometimes, well, you have your kind of her past elections, you know, so you'll have some of those. But your two big ones is your sheriff's and your road bridge, that'll have more line items for expenses. But the, the good thing is, once we set up like telephone, it'd be like standard number 5,000. Then we just go and attach that to every fund in the department. It's really easy to do once you set it up. So every one that would have telephone, their number would be their fund, 01, and then their department, 10, is 5,000. We know 5,000 means telephone, no matter what fund it's departmenting. That make sense? It's all uniform. So then conversely, if they wanted to see how much the telephone cost is over the county, then they could just pull that up, the 5,000 total.
Yeah.
They can actually just pull up, say, telephone in the inquiry, and they can find it.
So a service that is actually billed to multiple departments, if you want to look at one total cost per year.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So who's in charge of making sure that the staffs and.
I'm sorry.
Who makes sure we correct that, etc. Is that county clerk?
Yeah, once these are all billed, because what'll happen, we'll build a star for your first AP in, in, in January, and you'll just start getting those line items. That's how it works.
So do the commissioners, then after they've set the budget, then they need to set the budget for each lineup? Or?
Yes.
Okay. So like the commissioners will say, in county clerk, in contractual, this much is phone, this much is, you know, you'll have to set that also.
I don't think we do that on my offices. I don't think we can set to the clerk, is that what I think?
Well, I think we probably can, because it's budget.
Yes.
I mean, there are a lot of things that, you know, so.
Well, we're essentially doing that now, or just not seeing the detail. Like, if you're recording your budget, you want so much for line item, we're approving it.
So you're going to have to give, so you're going to have to decide what you're going to write down. And then, like, publication would be one I would think would be.
I think for commissioners, publication would be good, because I didn't know that that would be billed to our commodity line item or whatever. So there's some things that I would need to merge into our department, I didn't know. But my question is, is that do you just have a standard list, and say each department needs this? Or do you let the department say, here's a recommended line item we'd like to have for our department? I mean, how do you?
Well, I think the department heads can help with it, because they know their expenses. They know what they did Charlie, they know they have training, they know they have travel, they know they have telephone. They know, you know, whatever else it could be. Sure, it's a lot of quite a few more than what I'm just saying. And road bridge, you're going to have fuel, you're going to have, you know, rock, you're going to have, you know, whatever you want, yeah.
So Rhonda, are you, or are you on the, I think.
No.
I don't think you have any, I don't think so, so. The two big departments you're talking about need to put over to the X and Y.
They are, they're, and their AP does, and their accounts payable.
See, the AP.
And AP, and their receiving.
It's all, they're not, they don't have it in their files.
Oh, they have it, okay. Okay, so they're not going to CIC.
Correct.
And this would also make the grant funding, if they're having practice, things, or if they're doing the grant.
Yeah, I mean.
But I'm trying to figure out if they don't have the system in their, what is.
They would have to reload it.
So where are they? The sheriff's office is right over here.
No, it's about a street, four days from.
Okay, and Road Bridge is there. You all have computers, and you all have internet. All we need to do is give them a VPN, or a remote desktop connection to the server. IT is there?
No. Yes.
Well, she helped me, so I don't know who she was.
That, yeah, that would be, we do have an IT person that.
So why don't you guys use them in place of CIC, or are you using?
Yeah, they have to. He's got, he's probably got STAR running, but his is state, his is sheriff's software. But, so they bring their accounts payable into.
To us, and then we assign, and like, the road bridge usually puts on it like 400 or whatever, and then we put them, and then when they come to sign off on their vouchers, and we would have to fit a late control and sheriff, for instance, then the sheriff's responsible for catching that. But we put them in where they can also put them. So if we, we go to this, then say, I mean, some of them are publication, is a publication, but if you wanted something on fuel, I mean, you're going to have to tell us what one of those goes in. Some of them may be obvious, but.
All of this information is already here, it's just how you want to put it.
Yeah, we have the features available, that's, we just aren't highlighting them to the depth that the fair.
I guess my question is, do we, I mean, we would talk about our budget a lot a hundred times. And we've had another, this is our second, for a second. They're not easy. I'm not adding more of those publications. I understand what that is after that. But to try to use that to make a budget would be a. Now, is all of it, if you want to?
It's not. It's, you use it, and it will save you a whole bunch of time.
Oh, absolutely.
No, it's opposite. Once you see it in action, it is amazing to make the budget. I'll say as somebody coming in who doesn't know the history, I had to go and try to break down all of the different items to see where we've spent money, to know how I'm going to need to spend money in the future. So I, just knowing with commodities, I, I had no idea what. What I was putting in commodities. So I had to see why I was spending X amount on whatever.
Because you basically have to go pull the invoices and see what's in there.
That's the problem.
But the commissioners are going to have to be the ones that break down.
Yes.
What we're using. So the commissioners are going to have to be the ones that say, in a courthouse, regular line item, you're going to have publications, telephone, you know, and then like, like, contracts or.
The basic one, right.
And then there'd be the.
Each department manager.
I was going to say that.
The department I should be getting mine broken down, even though I know that it's not a budget, which shows exactly what, where, why I needed money. So each department could provide with the breakdown.
I guess that's what I'm asking. I don't think the commissioners would set that up. I think you guys would set it up, and we look at it, but I don't think we're going to set that up.
The way, the way I envision, I'm not sure if this is correct, just like when we had the budget, and each of you presented it, and you, each of you had your personnel commodity line item, but then there would be a separate sheet that would just say, okay, I'm asking for $8,000 on commodities, here's why. And then you have your eight items, and you say, I'm going to spend this much. So it's really just a little bit like proof or supporting documents that say, I need $8,000, and here's how I'm going to spend it. So, yes, we're approving it, but I don't know that we're doing each little one.
You're not setting it. They have to go in, shoot, what will happen is, if we pull this for the first time, there's going to be, you know, a line item that says commodities, and then under there, for the very first time, we will put that beginning balance, okay? And then it'll show in your first step. So once we pull that, Rhonda, then we'll go ahead and load the first step. And then it's all out there for them to, you can export to them and say. But they're going to have to come in and say, okay, this is, this is what we think. Sheriff's office is going to be pretty easy. They already got their throwdown in this spreadsheet, and he knows what his travel.
So what I see is going to be a deep change. And we'll throw a lot of things for root, is when you take the, insurance and all those costs, and put them underneath those personnel services, and take that, boy, go for five, it's going to make the budgets go.
Well.
Because all that cost is going to show, well, right outside of. When they break this down, it's going to have all your insurance cost, all your.
It is.
ECO cost, no, it's not, and our personnel lines, that's not.
There, so anything they pay would be in there, but the county's portion is not.
Right.
The county's portion.
So it will show that number will go, it'll change your asset.
You use the other, yeah. I mean, we can get those numbers.
No, that's what I'm saying. When this gets done, if you're doing it the way you're talking about it, when you do the first, it's going to show all those costs in there, all that phone cost, all that cost. And what then, we'll share the, we'll share the, for share the insurance, or we'll measure that.
The employee share of the insurance is already, I mean, it's coming out when we move their.
Right.
It's just, they're correct.
But if they set it up.
But if it's actually the county is paying for, then it would show under their expense line item.
So it'll make each department look like they have increased their expenditures. But really, when you look at the overall thing, you just took 800,000 from here, and you broke it down. 13 departments or whatever.
Yeah, he just took the first.
That's why the first time, I mean, what we've used as a budget for fast at this, we all, we, right, then, holy smokes, my budget's just looked better, but I really did, like, just moved. All the blood out of the 1.7, I know it's been set, that's like an out of the window.
But in personal services, none of each one of the funds in the department, that's in there now, right? Yeah, that's in there now.
So the total of their check comes out there.
The insurance is.
Just the total, yeah.
There's a lot of costs on it. Yeah, if you're talking two per sock, much, you got to have all.
We're talking true budget line.
All of the employee.
Because basically, what you're doing is you're putting your true budget together instead of a line, or you're going to, you're going to convince it, so it all goes in each individual department.
Yeah, yeah. The county's responsibility of benefits is in a different line called employee benefit. So that would be just broken down.
Correct.
Yes.
It would change, and go in the each individual one, correct?
That would give you a better idea of, um, turn on investments on, on, we have to turn, our turnover costs for each department. So that'd be something that would be pretty ideal.
I mean, he can quickly, and you probably will do that now, I don't know, or you use a star, something you use for your road bridge.
Not sure.
Okay, so for instance, if he had to look in, if we had him a VPN or we go, he could go and look at his line items, he can run his own report, and look at his own budget.
And see.
I mean, if we can get them to offices connected with our D P, that would be nice.
Is there anything there, because they can't be connected, because there's some people that cannot be connected, and they got to be separated. This is stuff that has to be separated out.
Okay, so that's one we can separate.
I mean, I have counties, the sheriff's office, road bridge, clerks, they put in their own accounts payable line items, their own invoices. The attorney's office does, the clerk's office does, the treasurer's office does it. Then it comes up in a holding bucket for the clerk's office. Once you all bring the invoices in to them, they just run a report, they verify that those are correct, and then run their accounts payable. Most of the time, the department heads know what line item they want to get. And it's really easy, because when we build these, and you're putting your accounts payable in, when you get your funds in the department, it brings in only your expense line items. So it's really easy to go down and say, oh, yeah, this is training. It's click on it, and it populates that line item. And we can do the same, just from the treasurer's side of the receiving as well. You can, you can have that set up in the departments.
Are you talking about deposits?
We're talking revenue coming into the county.
So like, when people are bringing you their deposits, this could, they could be entering it in in the system, and then they actually fit.
Yeah. Yeah. And physically, you're not holding that money till the end of the month, it's going into your bank.
So they would be putting it in the system, but they physically bring you the deposits, and they have their supporting documentation, and that'll.
You have the balance, you.
You have the balance, you run five thousand and your receipt show five thousand, so we're good.
So that they know exactly, each apartment would know exactly where their money is being.
So they're entering it in the system in the treasurer's office.
It's called a cash receiving department receiving, so they have that, they'll put in their cashier number and it brings it up. So when they do it, they get what they call a department receipt that they can give to whoever put it in the money. And then when it comes into there, there's another receipt number called treasurer's receipt that goes back to that department head.
You have to have both. Do you have to have, some of you have different receiving, systems today? It would all be through C I C, C I C would produce that receipt and it would give the information over. Once you process it, then you remiss the money, the treasurer's office, we balance to that.
So from a treasurer's standpoint, you would like that when it's all on, everybody's using the same system?
Yes, but I don't see that happening here in person.
I mean, you gotta.
We gotta have goals, right?
Yeah, I was gonna say, the nice thing is.
I just wanna make sure everybody has a status B P, you know, that with the receiving side as well.
The nice thing is you don't have all of it. It's just a matter of the, not the department head on board and utilizing what you have.
So I can see where this would be a good tool for departments. I can see where this could be a tool to be badly, to start to have a side against departments. And that's my point, is I don't want to sit here, if you guys set your thing up, I don't want to sit here and, have a report like this, say, why are you like all of our customers? I think that's where you gotta be very careful, I am, I'm setting up something like that, but I think you gotta be very careful on, what we do on this side, if you set it up and you know what it is, there's gonna be expenses that aren't the same every month. And I don't wanna, I think we gotta watch that danger, if we look at the total number all the time, then we're fine, because that's the number that matters. But I understand where that individual number means a lot, because it does help you guys, but it, it's gotta go hand in hand, there's a root, like, I use road bridges as a perfect example. When they spend four hundred, five hundred thousand dollars on asshole, it's gonna show a big number, that's gonna show it's way over budget. But it's not gonna be over budget because it's down in that part of the year and it's gonna equal itself out, so I think you gotta be very careful.
Okay, okay, so the past month, past year is being, no, it won't be like that, it's out every.
That's all I'm saying, I actually, we're looking at each individual line, and it's gonna show when that comes out, it's a big, that's a just a bunch of over budget number. But it's not, because it goes to the end of the year. I mean, just, these don't show anybody's total budget, until they get over it.
True, but his, when you do those line item, but he's gonna have a million dollars on that line item there. So if he spends five hundred thousand, it's just gonna reduce that line item there, that five hundred.
Right, but here's what happens now, is we get the sheet, and he did that in March, he's used fifty seven percent of his budget and he's got nine months to handle, so he goes to that budget. That's my point, is if you have it, I don't have a problem with it, it's not gonna use it, because he's not real over budget. The amount that we're being used right now, but he's got nine months, but he's not gonna have those bigger expenses happening. That's why I'm saying you gotta be careful, and, I understand all that, but you have to set it up so everybody's on the same page, because you could go to the wrong root list.
And, and if you run those reports monthly and you watch what you're dealing, and then, and then the department head, if you ask the question, this should be his, his responsibility, now he'll be able to explain to you. No, you know, yes, I could spend all of it at this time, I mean, this is how everybody knows it.
I believe we're, 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 at least, it's in a board law, and we're at law.
And you're the right one person.
We have to, we need to make sure we're working together with you guys. It's not, I don't, I'm not watching eyes over you guys, you're smart enough to run your office. But if you start spending money unwisely, then that's when we need to have a chat, but, until that happens, I'm not gonna sit here with a whip and everything else and watch you back at us.
Can you talk?
You better learn to do that, teach everyone, and somebody's gonna like the job.
But when we put in, when we put in an item, is there not lots to put it out with? When we put an item into the, when we put something into the budget, I mean, like, we, we put it in for, is there not a place to put that?
Six months.
Six months for the travel or whatever. So that would also show up on.
What I'm saying is, we, we should already know that, you are in those departments, so I don't need you to put them in there.
I agree.
What I'm saying is, when the budget is set, the budget is a twelve month budget, it's not your one month budget. I mean, if we have a one month budget, you guys can have your budget come in right now at whatever that number is, say, okay, I'm raising everybody's pay because I'm, I'm elected official, I do it all, so I'm gonna raise everybody's pay and spend all my budget on that pay at one month. Guess what happens the second month?
And that does a really work.
In that terminology, so that's why you have to figure this as a twelve month budget, and that works all the way around. So anytime, anything, any funds that.
Jay, everybody could have peaks and valleys, you have a disaster, or like a court case, and you gotta do whatever, but the sheriff's department has a ton of overtime, for this case, um.
We have a big.
But I think that's a part of it.
My point is, when that happens, we don't need to sit there and take the sheet, go work eighty five percent or work a hundred ten percent, and we gotta top it up. What I'm saying is, let's simplify this, with the budget, I don't care how you set that up, it's how you use it after it's set up, and who uses it. If you're using it to watch your expenses, I got no problem with that.
We shouldn't be.
What I'm gonna watch, is I'm gonna watch the total number, because that's what I'm gonna watch, I don't care what you're spending that.
Well, what she's showing is we can do both levels.
But that's what I'm saying, but who needs to watch those numbers, that's my question, you need to watch your individual.
They'll watch the.
I need to watch that total. The totals will bother me, the individual stuff, because I know there's gonna be peaks and valleys, I mean, gas goes up, gas goes down. All those things will change, it might, it's not, I break them out just a month. But at the end of the year, when you get to month eleven, ten, eleven, twelve, that's when you guys start paying attention to the total number versus that other.
I mean, that, that's how you wanna handle it, but I mean, there's two other people, like, if they're, you know, who's gonna get there, they might wanna see it differently.
And I'm on that, and they can easily have, what I'm telling you right now, as an elected official, I'm gonna have voted in this, and as an elected official sitting out there, they have it, right, because they do it their way to walk, when it really comes out to it. The only ones we can tell that we're gonna use a system to use it, but, but the thing is, is that it's a system that will work, but you can't use it, you can't abuse it, and that's the problem, right, is if it gets abused, we've got a major nightmare. And then we got more problems than we got fixes.
And truly, that is your responsibility to watch the overall budget. And that is, if you make sure, it's, it is the department head's responsibility to watch their line items as they go through the year. And I'm saying, and if they're getting to the middle of the year and they see, oh, I'm here on training, um, I know I'm gonna have to have some travel time, because I've gotta go here, I mean, then they can kinda watch and decide, oh, I'm not going to this meeting because I need this training. I mean, that's where the, it, it, it's, it was, or I came over to this conference because there's no more money left in my training budget or whatever.
Does it get you the flexibility where there is a certain time where we have to pull out a different line item?
Yes.
Now, is that gonna show that?
Thank you, that.
We can over?
Yes.
Because then it's gonna show that line item you just increased because you took out a different one.
Well.
To slide over to make our averages as.
It's called budget adjustments, and you have to do that for the other, because if you don't show it as a budget adjustment, they will write you up, so yes. And Ronan does not have to do that, because that happens with the primary bridge guy. But we have to call it a budget adjustment, because if you're moving budget ready for this line item down here, first of all, the commissioners usually will say yes or no, and then the department can do that transaction for you, okay? Very good question, though, yes, you have to track those.
So back to my question.
Yeah.
This is the only part January one. So in the next few weeks, the commissioners are gonna be able to set what the personal services contractual commodities are, okay? They're gonna reset the budget, I mean, you, you publish the budget, but you haven't find, find it down, okay? So you find it down, then the department, you're gonna say, are you gonna approve a list of what can go, what the,
Line items.
Line items, the lower line item.
I think I have the bar, man.
Okay, so, so, in other counties, like, you have a set, like, okay, so you're gonna bring, we're gonna bring in that set and you just kind of look at, okay?
So I think I need to bring that in in this spreadsheet for every funded department that's close to your sites in the county.
Right.
Give it to the department heads, let them mark through, do whatever they want, and say, no, I really need this line.
Okay, so say they have, we're gonna make it simple, they have a hundred dollars in the travel. And we're gonna have phone and, I don't know, A B C underneath it, so they say that I need forty, twenty, you know, forty down here, so you're gonna take those numbers, as long as they don't look back, you're gonna let the department head set up those are?
I think they.
Absolutely, I think we're gonna look at what that body numbers, what that contractual service numbers, but they're gonna have the line items underneath it for all.
Yeah, I mean, we, we contact Ron and adjust whatever we need to do, as long as our model number.
Yeah, you cannot change once they set that.
But if you adjust them, so, okay, so, so what you're saying is like, through the year, if you see that you're spending way more on publications than you are whatever, then you're just, if you adjust them, then through the year, that defeats the whole purpose of the whole thing, doesn't it?
Well, no, because if I know that, for example, it's open enrollment and I need to do a letter to all the employees, okay? And I'm not going for training, so I can delete, take money from training and move it over to publications, because I have to do this publication, I have to.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
What it'll do is when you eat your line items, it will hopefully be more precise in the budget going forward.
Yes.
I'm spending this, I'm pulling up here, I'm spending here, so I'm gonna adjust that through your general rule, we're gonna be hanging on exactly what we need. Right, because the big thing you gotta watch for right now is if you have a high, like, right now, the cost, I think it's gonna make all the line items high. Those aren't your numbers, because they're gonna come down eventually. So if you're using those and setting your budget, that's gonna have to play a better.
I, I think what the commissioners have to decide is, what are the things that they wanna be able to see, is it just the three line items? Or in everybody's personnel, do they wanna see the total benefits that the county is paying? Because now it's split out by department.
I think.
What are those things that the county commissioners wanna see?
Well, that would change, because the only thing that would change there is Archie wouldn't change, because if that, if you want the first non-expense underneath that, it's gonna be a line item that'll be under it, so that number will be the end of what we're gonna see.
Right, so you only want those three line items, is what I'm saying, as far as.
But it's gonna include, but the question is, do we wanna show the benefits into the personnel service, that's the question, because, if it goes into that, that'll be a line item underneath those, we're still gonna see the personnel.
But do you, when you look at personnel, are you gonna want to dive into how much benefit specifically is for that, for the whole county? Or maybe that's some, you know, the work or H R.
We'll still have the availability of that.
Yeah.
We don't have.
Correct, but if you wanna see that for every department, I mean, would you, how does that detail?
It would be in there if we ever wanted to look at it, but it doesn't have, I mean, if it's part of the system and that's what they would choose to do, then that's already gonna be there.
That's the wrongest question is, are you gonna let the departments decide if they want that, until they're not, no, not in that scenario, you want the departments to each have.
Well, here's the thing, not, every department's gonna be the same, whatever they come up with, each department's gonna say, okay, I want this, this, and that, and I'm like, well, I want this. Everybody's gonna do the same thing when you all come together, but that, and so it's gonna be.
True, because the sheriff's gonna have late control and contracts and all kinds of.
That's a whole other deal.
Late control. Yeah, that's a whole different, yes.
That's a really different one.
I think this is just the idea, but in the personnel line item, I think you would probably have the same detail for all departments.
Yes.
But when you get to commodities and contractual, that's gonna differ according, because some departments are small and only have three or four line items, the sheriff's department, they have pages, so. The personnel's probably gonna be standard and the rest is gonna be customized according to what you guys think you need for your department to, a more detailed expense reporting to help with budget tracking and then help with creating the budget from here on out, so this is a multi-year.
It is, watching it a couple of years under those guys with, and then you don't have to worry about that, does it roll your nation from the free issue? And so when you get that report, that spreadsheet, that's where it's gonna be there, all you're gonna say is, no, I need increases line. She's absolutely right, and there, every fund in the department is gonna say, personal services for them, but then under there is gonna have your, fight of Medicare, everything that you're, and they're all gonna be basically the same, because if, everybody in the courthouse gets the same benefits, right?
Everybody, I mean, I'm counting forty.
Okay.
So I mean, road bridge would have to be different than sheriff.
No, that's what I'm saying, the self.
The county's gonna be there to spend the number of employees that are in that.
Well, when we look at the sheet.
Do you say that, the number of employees there under that department, that's where the difference is.
Ah, no, that's gonna be in payroll.
Oh, okay.
That's in payroll. In the ledger itself is gonna be, everybody in the county clerk is gonna be under, under, fund, the general fund, fund ten, their department fund, or department twelve, and then whatever those four, it's four or five, I can't remember how many, did you have very expensive, will be there, and her total of employees will be under personal services, by the, salaries, by the Medicare.
Yeah, that won't be.
So what, there's one employee or?
No.
Okay, fifty, and I'm gonna be the same for that.
That's the other pair.
What comes into commodity, what we currently say commodity contractual, that's gonna be what will be different from the sheriff's office to the road bridge.
Yes, correct.
And sorry to question that. Once this is implemented, you have your first year, your second year, then when you're doing that, the style of budget.
Five year that history.
That budget prep application then pulls those numbers to where then, as you're preparing for the next year, each department can look, on those lines, and it helps them decide, what do I need to request?
Yes, so back in the budget prep, when you can just pull back in, and when she runs that report, they commit the budget entry, so when she runs this report, for their department, they're gonna see what their actual, so their actual, and I would give them the five year history, you know, um, I mean, that's gonna take a couple of years to get, but at least a year or two on there will be enough.
So the line that's a history could, will probably be at that high, that blank commodity level.
Yes.
I mean, this would be in the line.
Correct, for now, because you totally built that.
Can I ask a question on that report, so on your recommended line item, is that something the system automatically, um, averages, or is that the line item that the department puts in?
The department head said they put that spreadsheet in.
So you pull up the department up there right now, and we're welcome, warm with money, because that's kind of other stuff that I've got.
Oh, this is revenue, hang on, I mean, did you?
Who wants like a commissioner report or something?
Here we go, so this is like federal, I think this is county clerk. So here you go, under this county clerk, they have their salaries, I didn't know that it's fun, oh, one, which is their general, oh, nine, obviously county clerk, so they have, and, so there's their salaries, their regular salary, here we go. Regular salaries, wages, part-time salary, wages, and then their cell phones, life and workers' comp, social security, pension, unemployment, on and on. This is just the county clerk's numbers here, so when she's in there doing her budget, she can see what she's at in her current year. If she's gonna hire somebody, she needs to take an account for that, uh, where she's at right now. So this one has already been adopted, guys, so I apologize, I don't have any, but it'll show each step when you're working on it and where you're at in those steps, um.
So how will they, meaning that, when they do their budget prep, how will the numbers be there for their tax calculation, so it's very much all that?
Not when we first bring this up, okay, we're gonna have to load that initial budget, break it down. Yeah, it'll take a little bit of time, um, to take, we'll have to have some payroll reports, so we can figure those out, we're gonna have to do your percentages. But once we get that, then.
So we do our, we're gonna run some extra, once it's finalized, whatever, then we can actually put the numbers in there.
Yes.
And then starting in January, you just try to have, I mean, the goal would be to have a revenue on January.
First before.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if, once we adopt it, whatever their numbers are for their three line items, then they, once they break down their stuff, then they would have to change how they're dividing up that.
Yeah, so if you get that done, and, uh, what I can do is give a spreadsheet with these ledger accounts, so you can get that out to the department heads so they can look, and they know what their overall budget is for each line item, which they've adopted that, then they can work on getting that initial load, and then we can go in there, uh, with the low health and support, we'll get you what the current, you know, is. And that way that'll help. The first year is gonna be tough, because you don't have numbers in on each line item, but after that, then it'll be, and it will be nice.
Percy, help with the audit, too, that'll be able to break that down.
Yeah.
So, um, sorry, I haven't.
Is that your answer?
We, we have.
I'm sorry, the.
We have four departments I can think of that are offsite. Um, so that would be an I T question for Sunny to give in the V P N. But up till then, if they. But up till then, if they needed access, they can come in here and use this computer and log in, and you can hear, could this, this computer has the CIC?
Yeah, and they all, and I sent them all login, so if they need to remember, take my.
So that's, I think, until we, that's an option of working through this, that if the VPNs, I guess, don't get set up in time for them to use it. They can use this.
By the way, do you want to, what can we do with that? Do you want this balance?
I'll pull out, yeah, they wrote it down for five hours, so let me pull out.
Does anybody have any questions or comments for any of us?
To me, I, I would think that any departments that have, whoever assists in the budget, this would be, I mean, for, I don't know in each department who helps with preparing the budget, but if you have additional people, I think, I don't know if there's a way, is there any like webinar, past recorded webinars where they can kind of watch some, watch one of them?
There's really good documentation out there how to do the budget prep. Yeah, I mean, quickly, I can, you know, it's just basically exporting that worksheet, send it out, bring it back in, import it, and then move it into the next step, which is just a push of the button.
I mean, this is gotta be known to all of them now, because what we've gotten out of our sheets.
Everybody can have their system.
I'm gonna go up and see where this, just to make sure that we're using the correct.
I did, I agree, and I think once you can, once you, they get these, uh, spreadsheets, because those are nice, I mean, it's got everything in it, and they can see their line items, they can see their salaries, I mean, I think this is something that I'll pull from and will take out the numbers, so then you can look at those for each department and then determine, they can determine what they want.
So my question, go ahead.
Well, we might have the same question, what's the process look like from here on out? What are the steps and what order are they in and how do we kind of keep progressing on this? But I think a lot of this work is gonna all happen out here.
It is.
And we're gonna hear about it, but I think a lot of it's gonna go on here.
So the first thing I'll do is I will get Rhonda a list in a spreadsheet of Allen County's primary counts. It'll be an X out, what she can do is I'll have it live by department, you'll be close to the same departments as what Allen County has. She can then send that out to you all, you decide, I like that line item, I don't, I need you to add this expense line item for my department. Does that make sense? Then they're gonna have the budget done the next week, so she can send you your overall amount, and then you can kind of play it from there, and then if you get that done, we're gonna import that in that spreadsheet, help Rhonda, whoever it is, upload that into the budget report, and then you're on your way.
Something that the thing we need to realize is going in the first year when we start doing this, our line item could be on, the computer adjusted on.
Yes.
As it comes to a cheaper state, let's really focus on that commodities line instead of the individual lines, we will have to adjust that.
You will, and the first year is a little bit.
I think two to three years, like you said, it can be refined, but it's gonna, it's gonna take, it's, yeah.
But I think the good news is, guys, it'll give you some really information for each department. So if you're running, you see, you know, trouble's getting up there, you're running out of budget, what am I gonna do? Do I go here, do I stay back, you know?
So we're still, that's important.
Yeah.
One thing that was mine for the P I P conference was that if you wanted to project, uh, like a three percent salary increase across the board, there is a step in the budget process.
Oh, yes. Yeah, I was listening to that.
Which is really, really, that was good to talk about, something awesome, but I have.
Well, I know it's true, because a three percent increase in salary is not your total cost. Because I agree.
They're projecting.
They're gonna be there in the five. Yeah.
The other nice thing is the benefit one.
Yeah, I'm gonna say they said benefits.
Uh, because we estimated benefits were going up five percent every year, then that can forecast it out.
Yeah, it does a projection so we can see what it might cost.
Yeah.
That would be good advice.
Yeah, when we start negotiating with the benefit.
In here in the budget prep, it's called what if scenarios, so I can come in here and say, okay, I, if my commissioners decided to do a three percent increase, it's going to go out there and look at everything and give you that by ledger, by department. But it's gonna increase.
Our particular line item.
Yes, for each particular line item. The other one is, uh, that's personnel, this is a budget overall, so if you come in, you guys say, okay, we gotta do something, let's see what two percent does over everybody's budget.
Well, if you want to decrease it, you can do a four percent or something.
I could run projections if we said, look, we need to cut two percent, you could run a projection on what that overall looks like.
I've never done it in that.
Well, I thought that's, it's actually possible.
I think, I, I think so, but I'm not gonna find out for sure, I've never done it in that. The one I like is this, is this the right here, because every year your benefits change, so this pulls from payroll, every type of benefit. So you would come in here and either put the new rate or the new percentage, whatever it might be, and you.
The numbers changes when, yeah.
So this is called a benefit calculator?
Uh-huh.
So it helps project what the benefit will be.
Yes.
So during budget, we can look at this and that would help us predict.
That is correct. Uh, so that's the other piece of your budget prep, I'm finding my mouth, sorry, guys. So like down here, you're gonna have all of your various types of insurance, papers, and I mean, everything that is in that payroll comes down to this budget prep module, so you can actually get, so once you put the new numbers in, you would just come in here, calculate benefits, report by department, report by ledger. It saves you a ton of time doing some figuring with payroll, yeah.
So when we start to go to a budget staff, I mean, a benefit staff, so you can see what, what content to be.
Or you get your notification that your orders are upgraded.
Yeah.
Yes, and you put in a new rate.
Yeah.
And then the new rate will.
Yeah.
Be projected, yeah. What comp rates change for counties too?
What?
Yeah, it depends on how many.
How many claims you're banking on. Okay, just a second.
B D O T O five, that's what you're getting right now.
Every year, even if you don't change the payroll, your expense on payroll.
See, I can do it right now.
Yeah.
There's some rates that are not, uh, sometimes.
Well, I was just asking.
Well, that's, that's something you can't negotiate, I mean, it's correct design, so.
Correct, I know, I get mine every year, and, um, a lot of my research data.
But those are the things that as a department, and we don't see that stuff, so we don't know if you can.
Exactly, I like that.
Oh, there you go. Yeah, because all such you have a category, so this report here, you still lump everything into the commodities, the contractual, and then personnel. So you, you will keep the same.
I think that overall is what we like to see, where it's lumped in.
But making sure, see, they've got line items, but I wanna make sure that same report.
Exactly, because this is, this is what we're testing to them.
So.
Right.
Yeah.
What's your? Okay, no, I just, I, so you're gonna get me Allen County without numbers.
Yes.
Next Monday, I should have a budget where it has contractual, commodity, property department, so then I could actually get that out to the department on Tuesday, and they could have there till the next year, and then they could work on it for a few weeks and write that stuff. And if we need to. Well, we're, we're finishing up something. You're, you're gonna do, but it is, they're gonna say, here's what it is, then I'm gonna give you a list of the county, the Allen County Sheriff's Department uses, and you can say, yes, I wanna use this one, and no, I don't, but you need to put it in this one. And so, two thousand for training, two thousand for, then you're gonna take the, they give you, and work it up into those.
You'll never let her go, you're top.
If you're using QuickBooks already, it'll be very simple because you'll, the way that it's set up on your reports, you can click on a certain line item, and then it just pulls open a report and shows all the individual things, so whoever's doing QuickBooks, they're just gonna go to their details section and literally try to take those numbers, it's just putting what you have in the system in more detail, you're already doing the detail over there. It's just putting it in C I C so that when we get all the budget stuff, it's the same uniform way, and they're all using the same process. But you're already going, I think, all the details.
That's what I heard.
So I think we are, I think.
So we need to decide, we need to, there's the part. I mean, I was thinking of road for a bigger man than Allen County.
Sure.
Okay. So what should I think is our A P for us, because the, and they'll work with the programs. I would, I would like to talk, I mean, there's a lot of, because it varies according to the way that me roll. And I don't know. Sorry, like physical, okay, sorry.
Because you were holding to your physical background, so it's more, instead of holding into.
But would they not be?
No, sorry, I'm just. Yeah, I just wanna make sure that's what Sunny is saying.
Okay.
That's not around, I said, if I got work, I got you, yeah, if I don't, if you want to be out of our A P for the, for the. And then get her two, which ended up, and the health department. It'll already be, and one other thing, would we get their, their loaded, this is security.
So when that happens, we need to. Uh, to, you know, any department, so they can use that for one. Yeah, for that, they can hold their base down, right?
So so everybody, this year, budget number.
Next year, the budget.
Right, well, you can pay like. There's no budget preparation.
If I have any questions for Debbie, um, question?
Well.
I believe what I were, you know, I mean, we'll all get.
Oh, we got, we got a year of experts.
Well, we don't know if here, we got like, we wanna start.
He wants to get.
Well, we're, we're making connections, but.
Then you're. That will get a little over, start. A little more. Next year, it'll be a great.
Right now.
I'm surprised God has a.
That's what I think.
Yes, I will, I'll share.
I know. Yeah. Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, that's.
So you've got a. Remember, once you get out of.
I, I don't think so, I need to work with her to basically get those, those all out, and then she'll send out the spreadsheet to everyone by department, so then they will substitute. Yeah, if anybody wants to see that one for us all.
So.
Well, everyone, I know about four of them have my email, they need to, they, well, Rhonda, Christine, Stephanie.
Yeah.
And Amanda, but I know they're training, but we, she, she knows how to use it from, I bet, for this area, but the others were all attended.
Because there's some people out there.
They're gonna be.
No, no, I agree, and, and, yes. We can work through that, and we have to have registered help with C I C, yes, like, if Allen had a specific question, she can help, she can put it all against. That's why we started, we can have the best software, it'll have support, it's worth it all, so, okay, any other questions? Everybody okay with this? It'll open up. I mean, the sheriff, if you're ready. I call it.
Thank you.
Yes.
You're good.
Yes.
Linda's.
You're.
And then the attorney is in.
I see we got one.
Their computer, guys. That person.
I've got, I've got a couple little things, but.
Yeah, I know. Thank you.
Yeah. Let me know.
Yeah.
I've never given one.
Yeah.
I was on.
Hi, Brett. I do.
So.
Well, I've got a couple things, I would like, I know there's only three of them, but I'd still like to be the elected.
Which we got.
But there's Chris and Rhonda and Christine.
Do you need one?
No, I don't need one, thank you. I know.
I will give on the location.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can, Brett.
Okay.
There you go.
And I'll verify that, I think I went to the last. I just had a couple things that Joe took with our council, so you're, you're leaving here about ten minutes.
Oh.
Will you guys sit up? I know, but it seems if you guys sit up here and then people sit here, because people complain to me they can't hear. I just have a couple of quick things that kind of deal with our council, and you said today, most of the time, you were, or.
Josh will be here first and third.
Josh is here first and third.
Yeah.
And if there's times he's gone, you're filling it, okay? So in regards to things like when we're dealing with contracts and stuff, a lot of times they'll be reviewing, like, if there's something we need to sign, many times they're gonna be reviewed by them first, and I'm sorry, you are.
Ryan Trichazzer.
We have our jobs now, I guess.
So. You know, Josh and I.
Yeah, Josh, yeah, just.
I know it's a firm, but I just.
Those are the big thoughts.
The big ones.
So if there's things that eventually are gonna come to us that are something legal that we're gonna be signing, many times they are gonna be gone through their office first, so just, they're physically here the first and third, okay, so just time wise, if there's things you want us to consider, and of course, that can be sent also other times, but for us, it's nice if we can sometimes converse on something that we're, you know, dealing with when they're here.
When sometimes, like with contracts, I've, I've just talked to Matt about it, I mean, it just depends on whether the parties.
Right.
Sometimes, it's just good to have a conversation with the department head too.
Yeah, so that was a question I kind of had, we started it with the Kimball thing, because Matt had said, you want me to go ahead and send it to the council first, and so I just, I didn't know what our. And so I just, I didn't know what our. I didn't have a thought on that. If, if they need to bring it to us and then we say, yeah, send it. Or do you want them to just send stuff to them in preparation for when they present it to us? That was a question I had for two of you. What, how do you want that?
Well, I think it's going to vary. I've got a contact or some contracts that are pretty cut and dry. It's a brand of contract that nobody knows anything about. Billability or whatever. Sometimes, but if it's like the city contacts, S R contacts, I mean, those are just kind of stamp upon. We did this the same day that they're presented, but there will be some. I, I'm trying to think of a contractor who had.
We're going to have a three year contract coming out.
Oh, what contract?
A three year contract.
Yeah, so that'll be handled over here because that's.
So if someone has something.
That's part of numbers.
Yeah, I mean, basically we're going to put the numbers down.
So if they have something that they know we're going to be considering, they would let us know, here's a contract we're going to be meeting, signing. And then we would say, yep, that one needs to go to them first before we consider it. Or other times we'd say, oh, this is a simple one. We don't need it. That was the question kind of Matt had.
Well, I want that. It's a totally good, we've never been in a contract before. So that's why I.
Right. And the reason I asked if previously, I think for Matt with that, they would just send it to counsel first before they kind of came to the commission.
Yeah, I have a problem.
I, I didn't know what process we want.
Yeah, that's fine with us. If you want to do it that way, you can just say, you know, this is.
Like the light patrol context he's talking about, it's not really. Not like the light, we're looking right now, but the only thing changed is not to pay, that's not. We don't get a chance to negotiate that. This is what they're.
And then the other thing was as we're working on the audit deficiencies and we're looking at policies. We've had three that we had considered and Josh, I think both of you last week. They had looked over the policies we were kind of starting to work on that had been sent out for feedback from the departments, but Josh, last week. I forgot what he said, but he's going to.
Yeah, he was saying that there are those financial policies that he didn't know those were in place here. And so we were going to use some templates to just.
Yeah, so they're going to kind of assist us. So on some of these policies, we're looking at implementing that would clear up the deficiencies in the audit that a lot of times are like the commission or multiple department issues. They're assisting us in that. And it sounds like they're going to be giving us possibly some templates that are going to cover a lot of things.
Some, some of that stuff's already in there, but it's not in our resolutions. That's why we're here.
So we should have something already or we're going to get something to look at?
Yeah, I think there's something in there that would stop clarifying. This will clarify.
Yeah, we're going to produce.
Those are your clarification.
No, but that's right. So that was just a brief conversation kind of at the end of last week's meeting. We had the three that we were considering and then that's when Josh said, you know what, let me look at like more of a larger package that's just going to cover a lot of things.
They always do that auto report. So it's cleaning all that stuff up. That's. It's a paper.
A question that once those things are approved and implemented. And we have a financial operations manual or something, then, then what occurs at that point? Is that where the department heads receive that and then they're implementing those things or what? How, how does that process?
I think that's why I'm certain Josh is like, I know we sent for tomorrow.
Yeah, I mean, it has to go through you and then, then they can start in line.
Okay, that was the couple little things. Rhonda, do you have any? This reporter or anything?
I do have a question if I can ask. We have a part time person who's going to retire again. But. I said, we have a part time person who's going to retire again. She wants to take a vacation for a long time and enjoy her retirement. Anyway, can we, instead of like hiring and retiring, if we find that we may need to. Have that person assist, can we do a 1099? Have we done that in the past?
We haven't done it for like somebody who's coming in as an employee.
But if it's just like on a consulting, we, we mind, we've got a project and you need to come in for three weeks.
Can you have them as a.
Why do you tell your hot box?
Because she's, there's no schedule. I'm going to have her.
So when she sort of like she leaves now and she comes back for three weeks in labor. Can you not just put her back as a part time employee in labor?
I guess we're going to hire and hire.
Well, I mean, we're not, she's not, she's not. So Corraxis is the non-entire person. So it really doesn't matter that much.
So just leave her out.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what you guys do.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, she can stay employed. She just doesn't have guaranteed hours, right?
Sure.
She basically P her in like as.
This is somebody.
That way you can just pull her in. Yeah.
So she got you guys everything you needed to get up there.
Any other updates? Pass the month on.
Um, we are working on finishing the tax distribution.
I've heard they made an estate on driver's license track.
No, they didn't have that. They, when they were at our meeting.
They have no updated when they'll be available to be added to training.
They just schedule it and they're trying not to do it at the end of the month because that's a big complaint.
I've called our state senator. I've called our state representatives, two of them, the representative, actually three of them, but two of them, I got Eric Smith. Eric was all of them. So they're holding away. That's what my thing is.
So they report into. They reported to David's buddy. But their big thing was they are also short stacked.
I turned, I told them, I said, listen, we got a calendar 15,000, 16,000 people. We got to know where to go. So I says, because the state won't give us the train.
So if they won't, there's a waitlist.
Right, so they won't. And I said, how can we get that so we can serve our people because we're trying to, but you're not allowing to.
Well, the other thing is they have to stop scheduling training at the end of the month. That's what we get in. Yeah, we can't pull staff off to go do that.
To do what?
The training, I can't pull staff off at the end of the week. Or end of the month.
Right, because that's when everybody.
So they need, that's the request that you guys put in for other counties.
The reason we can't go because we can't pull somebody out. We could get the train, but we don't.
We're still waiting.
It's too proud.
But I'm saying that the training that they have scheduled, not only the driver's license. They have done it at the end of the month. Every treasure is set.
Right. But can we call a part time person to work that day after the full time person out there to get the train?
Uh, and.
Because we're going to have to get that train at some point. We've got to go so we can get driver's licenses.
The other, but that's not the only part. They have to come into our office specifically and help set up the equipment.
So the equipment that was set up when you go along with her.
No, it's here. But it's going to be in a different location where not to touch it.
So it's, it's still where it was.
Yeah, it's in a corner. Where it was. Still connected to everyone.
So that's what I mean. It's usable then for it's up. We just need them to have them.
It's not set up to take photos and do everything. We have all the equipment. The line is still. So I mean, like we can't, we're not supposed to set it up and use it and use it. They're supposed to do all that.
Anything else?
We probably need to start calling, put some heat on, so.
Yeah.
That's where they are.
We got some. But I'll, I'll get them. I might as well.
That all? What conference? Southern Association with Kador on Friday. All the titles are kind of, how do you solve train people? What about the tax sale?
Yeah, not why. I do have a question now to Josh. Have a decision contacted our previous counselor regarding his. Property that was sold and he feels he's owed money. But that doesn't go with the work. It doesn't go through my.
So you've got to start it by applying the payments to the previous taxes, but you're just. It's not.
You do, you do. You got a new pedal car, I seen it. Most of the new pedal car you got. The pedal car.
I've dispatched all of those tools. I haven't designed that right up for them.
So you're going to let those kids at the schools design that up.
That's the little.
That's cool.
It's going to be very cool to see their.
So what do you, what class is it?
Both all high school.
It'd be similar. What's the estimate?
Yeah, some of it is just. So hopefully.
Brett, do you have anything?
No, I don't.
Counselor, have anything?
Yeah, just we're, we're going to articulate this.
Okay.
Actually, we need, I mean, have, we need to have an executive session.
Okay, but we're.
I thought, I thought you.
Well, just finishing this up if they had anything for.
Thank you. Will they check, can we do the tax?
Usually we're the boss of decisions, so.
Well, it leaves you a description of the topic tells you why they. In the middle of the line.
Yes.
But can I, once payroll, once real estate, I believe the top side. I would. I would move that we approve the tax rule corrections for the personal property and real estate as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All of those say some. Motion here.
So there, we did have a question. Becky said, let's see back down over the zoning portion of that. Because Becky said the zoning doesn't have control over any roads. But I thought that the way, and wasn't in a subdivision.
And that made us the.
The way I understood. Ryan to say it, sorry, I get Josh and Ryan can do sometimes. Way I understood Ryan to say it, that was part of the actual. Part of the statute was that we do a resolution, that you do a resolution here to the commission door and then it goes to them.
So I think this involves just the township and the county, but not her department, right?
Well, they were saying it led to the zoning.
I think they meant, I took it as a.
Okay, so, so if not, but still we're going to hold up. I'm doing a resolution today and then. All right, I will try to get with Josh for.
I'm not sure. I'm just going to get said by commission, so.
I just follow.
Get it.
No. I'm going to recess for like three minutes until.
Oh, okay.
Office of nature. Say that they don't have. They're in a subdivision. So can we just skip that part of it?
No, well, I mean, the statute.
Okay, so the statute says that they will.
Yeah, that they make a recommendation.
Okay.
So I don't know that they have to have that public hearing on it as long as they just have a recommendation, but you know, it doesn't hurt to just go through the full process.
Well, I'm just. Becky had, Missy come back now.
Yeah, the statute says that they, they make a recommendation. Regardless of if they don't have anything to do with really. Their recommendation will probably. And that's fine. It just, it's part of the process. So she's going to send that date that, that they're going to be meeting the next.
Right, she was going to know that it's kind of like the 20th. And I can, when we're in such a discussion, I can go over the channel.
Okay, so once we have that date, we'll just generate a resolution to commence that process.
And I'll try to let you know that we'll, we'll publish leases till next week because by Monday.
It's like every county newspaper. Legal publication, we meet on Mondays. This Jefferson County is the same way. It's like. We just have meetings. We could do the Tuesday. We can get you all this stuff. Otherwise you have to wait a week.
Yeah.
So, um, yeah, that sounds good. And then we'll, we'll talk about.
And I'll try to, like I said, one year.
And then we'll, we'll get that resolution to you this week.
They can.
Do it next week. And then they're right to the newspaper.
Right, yeah, and I can, I just go upstairs and sit in front of.
Oh, do you?
Yeah, yeah, it's going to be, I have last week's there.
That's very.
So with the executive session. It is. What exception? Or you want to just make a motion? I mean, if I can do it, I just need to know which. I just need to know which exception.
The 20th, what?
Well, so that there's the three or four things. The first one is the exception and then it says the subject to be discussed. So just the.
Just attorney client privilege information that.
I mean, that we recessed executive session under the following exceptions. Open Meeting Act pursuant to the tiny. Pursuant to the attorney client privilege exception to discuss issues between the attorney client. For, for. 10 minutes. Open session will resume at 11:50. And those to attend will be the commission and counsel. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Did you see that too?
Yeah.
We are out of executive session, no finding action taken, and we will resume the open session. Is there anything else?
Hey, Rob, what do we do for payroll at the end of this month?
Oh, that was a good question, Rob. Do you want to do it on the thirtieth, or do you want to do it on the?
How's it always been known by us?
Well. In the past past, we would have done it on the third, but before you could finish the last day of month.
We got both ways, so. Then thank you.
I mean, if I'm unemployed, I I'd like to pay, so I mean, if there's a way to maybe move it up to that Thursday, because if you do it Friday, it's not on Saturday, that's.
Well, the, if we do it on third, on Friday, then it releases to their account on Friday.
It would.
Oh, okay, yeah, so, and that would be a quick.
That would pay very long session to do.
Yeah, and I would probably just call in for that instead of driving fifteen miles down there if it's just a.
That's all it would be.
One item thing.
Yeah.
As long as you guys.
Let's do it Friday. I think that probably does it simple, is us feeling the hit bar.
Yeah.
Okay.
If I'm not driving a bus, I don't like to do a lot of.
Yeah.
Maybe I'll do this one, but if I don't call it.
I will. I feel like Charlie.
I did, I did forgive him, I thought something loose up there. I should, no, no, I didn't just say.
We know there's something loose up there.
They're lost, but.
Not not a lot of them. Man, I mean, as soon as those words come out of my mouth, that was not very well. That's something on those braces.
Is that everything?
You're having too much trouble out there, I can see you laughing all over.
You're back. We almost adjourned, so. Sorry, we forgot to come get.
That's all right. There is the contract, obviously, you guys, I have the original for your signature now.
Which one you need us to sign?
This one here.
No, okay.
That's all we're already made a motion about, so. Yeah, okay.
Okay, so I think we just need to sign it because you already heard it, right?
Yeah.
I wouldn't think that's gonna have a motion there.
Yeah, the motion, yeah, it was made, I think, last week.
Are you gonna fill in the date there?
I can.
Do you need just one copy or do we need more copies on?
Just, I can make a copy for our records, but we think.
Sign a cycle. You got one?
Yeah.
Well, I just talked to Luke today, get that mail back to him.
Yes.
What's the effective date that they'll start?
Um, they're gonna come out tomorrow, or this week, October first.
So have we got the other contract stopped?
Yep, yep. I have not, did you ask if I have? I have not. Um, I will get that letter of today, get it out. I was waiting for him to produce our act of mayors for us. And today I'm going to have to lay on him switching. Um, I'm gonna get you the signs. That's not good.
Eric, yeah, Eric, I guess you guys.
I'm moving adjourned.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Sorry, no, no, wrong.
Rob? Yeah. You know, I took the drive down here, it's it's actually pretty nice.